Good afternoon. The meeting of 3/4 City Council is called to order. Councilman James Green will give the invocation. And Councilman Nicholson, would you give the lead son the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Lord, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. We actually determine our medicine direct us as we would handle the business of the city. And Lord, we thank you and we actually continue covering our city. And we thank you for all the good that you've done for us. We thank you for what you've done. We praise you in advance for what you're going to do. Let us operate this meeting in a Christ act manner. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the rules?
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
I'm here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minute?
So moved, Chair.
Second.
And City Council meeting Tuesday, 24th of August of 2021. Motion been made to second. Any discussion, then let us vote. Motion to approve is six with one on the chamber. Does any council member at this time have any words recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? Okay, Mayor Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to quickly talk about this past weekend. We showcased some excellent teams at this year's Battle of the Border. Last year, we couldn't have it unfortunately, but this year, we brought it back in style. And I want to thank spar director Shelley Regal and also thank Joe Miro for all the hard work that they put in for that particular event. On showcase, we had Byrd, Woodlawn, Southwood, and Captain Shreve. Probably not a secret who I was cheering for the loudest over the weekend, but Captain Shreve did very, very well shutting out Leesville, who was visiting Shreveport. And we also had some teams out of Mississippi come. But overall, it was a great event and happy that we can have it for our young people. Next, we should soon see the bridge light up the sky once again here. This week began the line closures on the eastbound side of the Texas Street Bridge for the installation of the programmable LED lights. The project started September 1st and is expected to take about four months to complete. I want to thank Dr. George and Sandra Bukowski for their $1 million donation to the bridge. And also, I want to thank Red River Waterway Commission and the Louisiana Public Service Commission who committed funding as well for that those light installations. Next this year, we will celebrate the 30th anniversary of Paint Your Heart Out, Shreveport. Ms. Bonnie Moore and her team at Community Development have been at this for three decades now. Marcia Nelson, who heads up Paint Your Heart Out, was here for the very first one and has seen more than 1,700 homes improve through this program. I want to invite everyone out at 5:30 PM this Thursday at Riverview Hall for the kickoff of the 2022 Paint Your Heart Out event. Organizations and individuals will be able to sign up to be sponsors, volunteers, or members of the steering committee. The goal is to paint more than 50 houses this year. So let's make 2022 the best year yet. I plan to enter a COVID vaccination challenge next week with Mayor Nick Hunter of Lake Charles to help increase the vaccination rates in our state. In Caddo, we are still below 40% vaccination rate. We know that the majority of those hospitalized are the unvaccinated in our communities, and I encourage everyone who is eligible to get the vaccine, to take the shot. Don't wait, please vaccinate. It's the right thing to do to protect yourself and those around you. And I also want to add for us as a community to pray for Lake Charles. Right now, we have a tropical storm that's headed their way, so let's make sure we keep them in our prayers as well. Lastly, with the recent storm hitting our state, I want you all to know that our Shreveport Fire Department has been hands-on in the recovery efforts. Today, we have a swift water team on standby in case their help is needed with Hurricane Nicholas. At this time, I would like to recognize our Louisiana Task Force 3, USAR. USAR team that was deployed for Hurricane Ida. They were assigned several search and rescue missions, working with federal USAR teams, and conducted over 500 rescues and evacuations. Is Captain Joe Prater here? All right, Captain Prater, you can come up. He'll give a brief synopsis about the deployment of our teams. He was the operations section chief for the incident support team.
Hey, good afternoon. First of all, thanks, Mayor, council members. Came to speak on the recent deployment and the brief history of the USAR program in Shreveport. USAR started in a concept before Hurricane Katrina even came out in the state, and it came to full status somewhere near 2008 as we received grant money and purchased a large cache of equipment and began formal training in the area which formed the teams. Louisiana Task Forces 1, 2, and 3 were then formed. Task Force 3 is made up of regional response teams 6 and 8, as well as regional members from Region 7, and those are the governor's regions. The smaller teams function independently, and then we come together to form Task Force 3. The city of Shreveport is the host agency for Task Force 3. The first deployment for this team was in this, for the state, actually, as a team was in Tuscaloosa during the tornadoes of 2010. And then since then, we've responded to Hurricane Florence in South Carolina, followed by many responses to Florida for multiple hurricanes, as well as all major hurricanes. You've had a representation down south in South Louisiana for the past three years. I have had the pleasure of being in the operations section and have grown through that, through y'all's support. And then this first, this year, as we move forward, we were able to start providing some more overhead from this agency in the forms of division supervisors, which had whole regions of the governor's area or the Homeland Security regions under their tasking. We work as part of the ESF-9 function, which is the search and rescue branch, and the ESF-4 function, which is the fire branch. The search and rescue branch is staffed and works directly with Louisiana National Guard, Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries, and Louisiana State Fire Marshal's Office. Shreveport Fire Department personnel staff multiple positions, like we said, and only two agencies staff these positions outside of the Fire Marshal's Office in the state of Louisiana, one being Shreveport and the other one right now being St. George Fire Department near Baton Rouge. Baton Rouge is trying to get some folks there, but they're constantly being affected by this, and so it's more difficult for them. Hurricane Ida is potentially the most costly hurricane to date, as the area of impact was very large and populated, and damage occurred to the critical infrastructure that was unreparable in a short amount of time. In fact, some areas will not receive electricity for another 30 to 45 days or longer. It damaged many of the sewer systems and water systems as we got down there. Louisiana Task Force 3 and a small component from Louisiana Task Force 2 out of Baton Rouge were the first ones on scene. They were able to deploy while the hurricane was going through, and they managed to respond to La Plasse, Louisiana. They arrived there early in the morning of Monday, when it came through on Sunday evening, so they arrived early Monday morning, just as the hurricane was passing. And in that amount of time, for the next 18 hours, they performed over 500 rescues that, yeah, 500 rescues, that was including some homes, some apartment complexes, and other things like that. Most of those rescues, in fact, about 350 of those, had to be removed by boat. And so those boat teams worked tirelessly and very efficiently to make that occur. After the next rest cycle, they became the first teams that were assisted by airlift to make access to Grand Isle, Louisiana. The team assisted by additional federal teams and state teams that have been EMAC'd in to provide support, were able to assess and perform secondary structures on the island. The total numbers at the end of the event, which was 10 days long, the total numbers from the entire state on the USAR side, just on the side we're speaking of here, which made up of 25 teams consisting of federal resources and state EMACs, came out to 40, over 45,000 structures were assessed, and over 5,500 human and animal interactions occurred. Of that, the 500 rescues that occurred in the state of Louisiana were performed by members from your area here. At one point, as operations chief, we're managing, like I said, 25 teams, including some NGOs or non-governmental organizations that worked with us. The division supervisors, which I would like to personally recognize because they worked for me flawlessly, were Will Millsaps and Richard Davidson. They both worked for Shreveport Fire Department. They worked alongside of federal counterparts to give tactical objectives and directions that they received from the operations section. And like I said, this was the first time that the state actually deployed that, and it was key in being successful. The agencies that went with us were Caddo Fire District 4, a member from Bossier Fire Department, and then multiple members from Monroe Fire Department and Washtau Parish Fire Department. Once again, we'd like to thank Chief Wolverton, we'd like to thank the city, the mayor and his staff, and the council members for supporting this program. It's been a long time in building this program, and we look forward to a lot of other, lot of other money coming in from federal government and some other things as we build a team that is comparable and excels anything that any of these federal teams could do for our area. So, thank you to the citizens as well for that support. And that's it, sir.
Captain Prater, I just wanted to thank you and your team for going above and beyond the call of duty. You guys clearly serve our community each and every day. Our neighbors, our family members in South Louisiana needed our help, and you guys were the first ones to step up. So, super grateful for you and your team and Chief Wolverton for always looking for those opportunities for us to get involved as well. So, if we can give them one more round of applause.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the last, the last group I want to invite up is Dave and Wendy who work for Sony Studios. They'll be, they'll come up. Okay, I thought Rachel was going to come up with them, but they work for Sony Studios, and they're filming a very exciting project here in our city. And I want them to talk a little bit about that project, and you guys can ask questions if you'd like.
Hello, everyone. On January 10th, 1949, George Foreman was born into a family of eight children with a single mother who couldn't afford to feed them. He grew up basically malnourished, graduated from junior high school but never spent one day in high school. His mother contracted tuberculosis, and he ran the streets until he was 16 years old and was chased by police K-9 unit under a house and was forced to cover himself in human waste so that the dogs wouldn't find him. He then changed his life, joined the job corps, and one year from joining the job corps, where he met a guy named Doc Brodus, who taught him how to box. In one year, he won the gold medal in the 1968 Olympics. He then went on to a great pro career, and his sister had a baby that they named Little George, was his namesake, and he loved that kid like, like nobody else. Two weeks before a fight with Jimmy Young, which if he won, he would have got a rematch with Muhammad Ali, his sister called up and said that Little George had suffered a seizure, was in a coma, and probably wasn't going to live through the night. So he rushed out of training camp, offered the doctors at the hospital any amount of money that they needed to bring in, doctors, use his plane, whatever, and they said, "George, we just don't know what's wrong with him." And George's mother said, "George, there's only one thing we can do. We got to pray to Jesus." And George said, "Mama, that's not going to save this little boy." And she said, "Everybody in the family's doing it." So he went into an empty hospital room, as he told me in his kitchen, and he got down on his knees and he said, "What kind of God are you picking on a little seven-year-old boy? All he did was bring joy and happiness to everyone. You want someone named George Foreman? Pick on someone your own size. Take me. Amen." The next day, Little George woke up out of the coma, and everybody was jubilant, except for Big George, who looked around and thought, "What'd I just do?" Two weeks later, he lost to Jimmy Young in a fight that he should have won easily. In the locker room after the fight, he heard God's voice. "George, are you afraid to die? Who said that? Nobody said anything, George." "George, don't you believe in God? Why are you afraid to die?" And George looked at his trainer and he said, "Archie, he's coming for me right now." And George's eyes rolled back in his head and he collapsed. And in that moment, he said to me in his kitchen, "I knew I was dying." And with my last ounce of strength, he cried out, "I believe. I believe in God." And a hand picked him up out of the darkness, and he woke up on the training table where they were about to zap him with paddles, and they said, "George, we thought you were dead." He said, "I've been reborn, and I'm never going to box again." He opened up a ministry, his own church, and he opened up a youth center to get kids off the street. 10 years later, he weighed 315 pounds, was bald, and was preaching and playing ball every day with kids when he got a call from his accountant saying, "George, your manager sold you down the river. All the investments went bad. They sold all your homes, and you only have $2,000 left to your name." The bank repossessed his youth center, and he turned to his wife, Mary Joan, who he had now been married to for quite a while, and he said, "Mary Joan, I only know how to do two things: preach and box. I'm preaching and paying the bills." She said, "George, you're 38 years old, you weigh 310 pounds. You're not thinking about going back into boxing." He says, "I don't know how to do anything else, and I'm afraid to lose my church." So he did whatever he could, sold whatever he had, but it wasn't enough. And then one day, he came downstairs, and Mary Joan was sitting at the kitchen table crying. He said, "Mary Joan, what's wrong?" She said, "I had a dream last night, and I think God came to me to tell me it was okay for you to go back into boxing." And George said, "Well, what did God say?" She said, "He didn't say anything. He just showed me a vision of you as the heavyweight champion of the world." And so George decided to go back into boxing, and he boxed some small little fights, and he worked his way back up, and he was still a draw, so people fought him. And at 43 years old, he got a chance to fight for the championship of the world against Evander Holyfield. And it was a Rocky-like fight. It went all 12 rounds, and Evander couldn't knock him out. And at the end, even though George lost, everybody loved him because he fought so hard. And the next day, he went into the bank, and they gave him a check for $11,800,000, which was his share of the pay-per-view. And they, and the banker said, "You never have to worry about your youth center or your church again. They can stay open the rest of your life." And Mary Joan was ecstatic. She said, "I can't believe it. You don't have to fight anymore." And George said, "Mary, what was your vision?" She said, "But George, everything has changed." She said, "He said, 'No, nothing has changed.'" So he kept fighting. And two years later, he got a chance to fight a guy named Michael Mora, who was 19 years younger than him, and he was a killer. And for nine rounds, Michael Mora beat on George Foreman unmercifully. But George waited, and in the 10th round, Michael Mora made a mistake, and George caught him with the right hand and knocked him out, and at 45 years old, was the heavyweight champion of the world. That's the movie that we're going to make. That's the story we're going to tell. It's one of the great sports comeback stories, but it's also one of the great faith-based stories. So, we were scheduled to shoot in New Orleans, and Cousin Ida showed up and changed our plans. And so now, we want to reset this movie here in Shreveport, and we've been working with the mayor's office and the Economic Development Group, and they have been providing great support for us. And this is Wendy, she's our line producer. She's the hardest-working woman I've ever met in my entire life, and she's going to tell you exactly what we need.
Hi, my name's Wendy Williams, and I'm the line producer on what my partner in crime neglected to say, that the title of the movie is Heart of a Line, and it's the life story of George Foreman. We work for Sony Pictures, Sony Pictures and Affirm, which is Sony's faith-based arm, which is also the producing partner in this film. Our goal here is to bring the movie in for our first block of shooting and potentially our second. First block would be 34 shooting days, starting the beginning of November, many different locations around the greater Shreveport area. We're going to be doing, we've got 12 days of boxing. All of our boxing will be in a virtual ring, but we will be hiring a number of extras. The entire movie is period. It takes place in George's life from the time he's 11 till he's 45. So we span basically late 50s through mid 80s. So we're going to be looking for, right now, we're on the hunt desperately for hotel rooms for the number of people that we do have to bring in. In addition to that, we'll be doing extras casting calls locally to find all of our extras. We're anticipating hiring about 1,500 extras locally for a payroll of approximately $285,000. We'll be looking for picture cars. Whenever we go into these sorts of scenarios, and even though this is not exactly what we planned to do for this movie, what we've discovered is this amazingly huge resource of creative talent here in this area. The architecture is unlike anywhere else, and for a movie like ours, it's entirely set in, set period, we've ended up, we may have been running from a storm, but we kind of ended up in exactly the right place, which kind of brings this whole, you know, full circle. You always end up where you're supposed to be. Our goal when we go into these sort, into towns, is always to spend and hire as much as we can locally. There'll be equipment and things like that that we're going to have to bring from New Orleans. A lot of the local crew is busy. We will be bringing in a lot of people. But overall, when we're building sets, you know, everything from lumber, food, rental cars, hotels, location fees, because we are looking for a number of homes in the areas, we're going to be shooting in arenas, a number of different scenarios. So our goal is to have as much local community involvement as possible, and also, you know, to spend as much of our money as possible locally. And I think that kind of gives you the overview. I'd be happy if there's anybody with specific questions. Yeah, right now, I'm anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of over and above, not including extras, crew payroll, hotel rooms, any of that sort of thing. And we're looking at approximately 9,000 to 10,000 room nights, just to give you a sense of how many room nights we're looking at. And this is all, it takes place in a very short period of time. Our goal is to be done the first block just prior to Christmas, because what happens is, over the Christmas holidays, and for another six weeks past that, we have an eight-week weight gain hiatus for our actor. Luckiest guy on the planet gets to go through the holidays, eat as much as he wants, because we need him to gain about 40 pounds. So while we're doing that, while he's doing that, we'll be resetting and setting up for the next block. We're anticipating over and above extras payroll, hotel room nights, crew pretty Ms. Our spend in the area will be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $5 million.
Before the council asks any questions, Mr. Chairman, before y'all ask any questions, I just want to put in a word for our chairman, Councilman Fleury, and Councilman Green would make great backups for the movie and stunt doubles. And stunt doubles if you need them, so.
Can I put them into a ring? You know, there's something to be said for a charity event?
Best boxes I've seen.
Where we put you guys in the ring and let everybody take a few shots.
Best, best boxes I've seen.
Mr. Mayor, you talking about backup. James is going to be George, and I'm going to be his backup.
I just was going to offer, if you need to cast a councilman to gain 40 pounds for a role, I could probably land. But seriously, thank you, thank you so much. Welcome to Sony Pictures. If you need anything in District City or elsewhere in the city, the mayor, or any member of the council, we'd be glad to have you. We're delighted that you're here, and we hope to come back and make another movie in Shreveport.
I will say that everyone from the mayor's office, economic development folks, everyone in town has been incredibly welcoming. Like, first of all, we came here, Shreveport was our hurricane evacuation plan, and then we got here, and we were going, the production designer and I were going out for dinner, and as we're driving through the neighborhoods, we're like, huh, like, this, this is a pretty great place. So, you know, we got here via circuitous route, but we're happy to be here, and everyone has been incredibly hospitable along the way.
Wonderful.
The one thing I just want to press upon you is, we have a very, very short fuse on this. We were five weeks out of shooting when hurricane, the hurricane hit, and so we just backed up everything by about four weeks. We've been working with the mayor and the Economic Development Group, but there are things that they will ask you for that we need answers for, like really quickly, because if we're going to turn this around, we literally have to be back in prep in a matter of weeks in order to make our shooting date finish before Christmas, which is kind of crucial to us. So, you know, anything that you can do to expedite any of these decisions would help us immensely.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all so much for coming and speaking, and council, appreciate you guys hearing. I've already called the chairman and the vice chair about some of the things we need expedited, so we'll be as accommodating as possible. And just for your situational awareness, myself and Drew Muton, when we went out to LA, we were talking to Sony Pictures and their executives about not just this production, but also production in the future for the city. So, we're trying to do some more long-term investment and have some exciting projects just like this one come to our city. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Those of you that are standing to the back, I just want to make sure you're aware that we have an overflow room outside with the chairs and a monitor if you need a place to sit down.
Chairman?
Yes.
I, before the meeting started, I looked for Mr. Magnner from the Chamber of Commerce, and I didn't see him. Would it be okay to bring him up now?
It'd be fine.
And Ms. Regal, if she's available?
I don't see her. Oh, there she is, okay.
So it looks like Mr. Magnner has a little bit of a presentation for us, but then just hang on if we have questions.
Appreciate the opportunity, Tim Magnner, I'm at 1001 Bayberry Circle in Shreveport, Louisiana, and wanted to update you a little bit on the building. We have had some conversations about the status of the building that the chamber is in currently, and I wanted to provide you with some visuals. I don't know if we can, can we get that up on the screen? I don't know if it's possible.
We need some technical support so we can get you, get the projector working.
Should be plugged in, ready to go.
All that Hollywood excitement, now we're back to our normal home drum life.
Indeed. Coming up? No? All right.
Someone went to get the IT guys.
Okay, apologies.
While we're waiting for that to happen, does anyone have a question about the transfer of the Chamber of Commerce, of the library to the Chamber of Commerce that either Mr. Magnner or Shelley could answer?
Yeah, at your invitation, Councilman, I certainly think this transfer is a good idea. Members of the public and some members of the council have expressed concern about the need to ensure that the city has a right of first refusal in the event the chamber at some distant point in the future ever wanted to dispose of the building. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to purchase it back. Likewise, there've been discussions about restrictions that would prevent any substantial change to the exterior of the building or would impair its historic value. I understand that we're all on the same page about that.
That's correct. And again, I think the, really the driving force, and there's visuals to go along with this, but the driving force right now is that the building is going to be 100 years old next year, and it has seen a significant amount of service in that time, many years as a library, about 60 years as a library. The chamber took it over in 1980, and the lease agreement with the city obligates the city to support the exterior, and we support the interior. And the challenge that we've got right now is that there's a significant hole in the roof that we've, that's been there for about a year or so. And it is, it's degrading the interior, the roof itself, but it's also having a deleterious impact on the underside of the building itself. And so, we've had folks out to look at that. It's about $100,000 to replace the roof. It's a tile roof. There's only a few companies that do it. Essentially, what has to happen is all the tiles have to be taken off. They need to reapply a underlayment in there that will seal up all the holes and then put the tile back on. So the goal there is to, is to preserve that. In addition, there are some safety issues with regard to the stairs, the cornices, the windows themselves are wrought iron windows. Again, these are all original. They've started to rot through. The city and the, and the chamber invested about $500,000 each in 1980 to update the HVAC. That's now 40 years old, so that's all going to need to be replaced. There's about $250,000 of HVAC that needs to be replaced, and...
What is the value of the building, Mr. Magnner?
You know, I don't know. Again, I believe that the, actually, I don't have a way to determine that. That would be the Caddo Parish Assessor's Office. There it is, we're good. Yeah. So anyway, this is the roof like I was mentioning. As you can see, it started to peel away the roof tiles itself. You can see the black is actually the roof. There's a, it's almost like a sandstone underneath there, and so all the white is where the roof itself has been peeling away. And you can, if you look very closely, you can see the metal. And you can, if you look very closely, you can see the metal lay that's been, that the stuff is adhering to or detaching from. This is the, lovingly called the swimming pool that we have. This is where all of the roof, the water and all of the stuff from the roof comes. This is, this is the pretty significant issue that we have right now. This is the thing that will ultimately make the building unusable. We also have other roof leaks in other parts of the building. This is in a conference room upstairs, and you can see the, you know, the water is making its way through the substrate there. We've had additional water damage in cornices. These are some other areas. The windows, as I mentioned, some of the panes themselves are broken, but you can also see, again, these are 100-year-old wrought iron, and we, you know, to replace them is a not insignificant amount of money. But the goal with that is to maintain the historical integrity, so it continues to look the same way. A piece of the cornice fell off a number of years ago. We've got stairs, and again, this doesn't look like much, but these are safety issues for folks coming in and out of the building. I mentioned the pumps here, again, these are 40, 50-year-old pumps in some cases. We have replaced some of them, but the others need to be replaced. I mentioned the HVAC, again, this is 50-year-old or 40-year-old HVAC, all of which needs to be replaced at this point, it's well beyond its useful life. The interior of the lobby there, this is the original from the 1920s. And again, this, you know, our hope here is to be able to really restore this back to its original glory. It's one of the few examples of this kind of architecture in the state. Fun fact, the, what looks like stone there is actually made out of sugarcane. The floor in the lobby is actually made out of sugarcane. It's one of two places in the state where that kind of floor is still available. And so, there, you know, this is a, really a historic landmark that we're trying to preserve. The chamber has been responsible for a great deal. We've replaced the air separator, we've replaced the boiler, we replaced the HVAC, we actually replaced the flat part of the roof, you know, beyond what was required in the original lease. But the goal with this is really to take this building and to preserve it. And we believe that, you know, as the, as an anchor tenant in downtown, it's important for us to take, you know, virtual as well as physical ownership to be able to maintain this, to keep this up, and to bring it back into the kind of service that we know will support the community. So, I just wanted to update you on that. Councilwoman, thank you so much for the opportunity. Happy to answer any other questions or provide you with any other information.
What's the total cost of the deferred maintenance on the building?
The total cost on the deferred maintenance?
Just the roof, the HVAC equipment, the other problems you pointed out.
Um, I mean, we've looked at, the roof is about 100,000. The HVAC itself, we estimate around 250. I have no idea on the windows yet. I finally found somebody who can come out and give us a bit. I'm guessing that's probably in the 200,000 to 300,000 at a minimum. Again, those are, those are pretty substantial. And then there's, you know, all the other, the bathrooms need to be updated. I mean, there's, the elevator needs to be replaced, it's out of code right now. So, you know, we're anticipating, you know, millions, honestly, over time, to update this. And again, we think that, you know, we're willing to outreach in the community to try and raise the funds to do this, to help preserve it.
I don't know if this is for you or for Ms. Regal, Mr. Magnner, but there've been several hypothetical, doomsday hypotheticals about the future use or any sort of changes or alterations that might be made to the building, and I think it would be good to hear to how we, how we're covered to keep those things from happening. Things from the Historic Preservation Commission, and then other copyouts that have been placed.
And Ron may want to chime in here, too. Over the past couple of weeks, we've been looking at just those things that you mentioned, as well as how this is structured. That's why it's being done. The Louisiana State Constitution allows for this type of transfer when it's in conjunction with a cooperative endeavor agreement. And that cooperative endeavor agreement can cover exactly the things that you were talking about, which are, you know, permitting, and on a historic structure, when you have permitting, he'll have to get a permit for anything he does in the building. When he gets a permit in a historic structure, not only does that go through the standard, normal permitting process, and the MPC is involved, but so is the Historic Preservation Committee. We've done some things in the cooperative endeavor agreement that will allow reverberatory clause, some of those things that people are concerned about. And then also, in that CEA includes language about the types of businesses that can be in there, and that if there is anything in there that does not, it does not align with what they currently do, the city has the right to notice, and they have the right to corrective measures, and if they don't, we can terminate the CEA. So, we've tried to include everything that people were concerned about, but yet continue to do what this administration asked from day one, which is lessen the burden on the city. And they're gonna continue to do the things they've been doing there for over 40 years at the city's cost, but now at their cost. And so, I think it's a win for us, especially those of us who are responsible for the maintenance on this facility.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Any other discussion on that? Okay. Does any member here have a question? For Mr. Green, Mr. Terrence Green, props stand.
Mr. Green, I thought of something between the beginning of the meeting and now. There is a corner at Gilbert and Piermont where for, not to know if this is you, or Mr. Norman, or Mr. Daniel, but there's a storm sewer drain that for months has had a tire on top of it, a partially shredded tire, and some crates, and just sort of looks like somebody dumped several items at that location. I wonder if we could get that cleaned up in conjunction with the other departments responsible.
You said, I said Gilbert, right?
Yes, Sir Gilbert and Piermont. Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Mr. Green. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the revenue collection plan? And everyone received their charity bond, forward to a report from the city attorney. Okay, we have one item today to be added, and I believe it's ordinance 140, right?
Yeah. Ordinance 140 to be added for introduction, and that ordinance is to amend section 62-91 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Department of Public Assembly and our creation fee schedule.
So moved, Chair.
Okay, and...
Do we need to invite public comment on this?
Yes, I'm going to that. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of or against adding this item to the agenda? And that's ordinance 140. Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to add the item to the agenda?
So moved, Chair.
Councilman Green, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any discussion? And let's vote for adding. And that passes seven to zero. Do we vote on that now? That's a two, two reader, right?
Yeah, I'll read it for the introduction section.
Okay, we have the following public comments. Councilman Bowman will control the tie.
Ernestine Coleman?
Good evening. My name is Ernestine Coleman. I live at 3513 Huston Street, 71109. And I'm here because of my water bill. Round about February the 14th or 15th, the water line burst in front of my house, but I had water. I called the water department, and they came out the next day. Well, my son said, "The water's still running in front of your house." But it was running on the street. When the water people came out, the water burst at the meter. And when I got my bill, it was 500-plus dollars. My water level went off. So, I came down to the water department. A friend was there, and he told me, "This is the lady you need to speak to." She said, "Okay, I sent it upstairs. You'll get a call." That was back in February. I didn't get a call. I sent a certified letter to the mayor office. I have not heard from them. I contacted my city council, Mr. Bowman. I haven't heard from him. Now, when I worked for government, we had seven to 10 days to respond. My son said, "Well, you know, we in this pandemic, it gonna take 'em a little longer." But gee whiz, how long will it take? So, I get my bill last week. They gonna disconnect my water. I need the city council to address this. I have not gotten resolve from the water department, nor the mayor office, nor my city council, haven't heard from any of them. So, I need you all to look at this and address it for me.
Yeah, sure. Well, I talked to Don, I talked to Mr. Hobbie on, not too long ago, about this actual, at 3513 Huston, and I actually came to your house on last week. Again, there wasn't a car there, and I didn't get a, the number that you had left. No one answered that. It actually was the wrong number, and I even looked up to find another number for Ernestine Coleman, and there was another guy who said that stayed at that address. I didn't get, no one there. I was there last week, and I actually spoke to Mr. Green while I was sitting out in front of your house, and I said, "Well, no one's here," because there was someone next door, no, two houses down, that had a lot of stuff outside in front of the house.
I did not have a car, and I'm at home at least 80% of the time.
This was...
I have not heard from anybody.
Okay, I came out to your house, and I tried to call you back. But I will get, I will speak again with Mr. Hobbie and see where we at on this, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Mueller?
Hello, y'all. The city of Shreveport appears to be in a state of emergency. Every statistic you review demonstrates that all areas of crime in Shreveport have increased with no slowing pace in sight. Labor Day weekend, our city begged for assistance and comfort, and only one city leader stepped away from their weekend to offer hope. All others were either silent or pushed a political agenda for a vote in November. I'm not here to point fingers. All I will say is that elections have consequences. Unfortunately, Shreveport appears to be reaping the seeds we have sown for years, maybe even decades. My family moved here in 2017, and we moved from Florida. We moved from the beach in Florida to the Red River in Shreveport. Still trying to figure that one out. We have grown to love Shreveport. Recently, we made a decision to buy a house in the city of Shreveport. It was an intentional decision. While many suggested we move outside the city limits, we made a conscious decision to be part of the solution and not the problem. We're invested. It will take more than the city leaders sitting in front of me today to solve this issue. However, you are the leaders and are the top responsibility to cast vision and hope. Proverbs 29:18 says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish; but he that keepeth the law, happiest he." Notice how that verse concludes. Proper vision leads to those who keep the law. My prayer is that the vision for Shreveport is cemented in a manner that rises above party politics and petty disagreements. Shreveport has potential. Shreveport can have hope, but it begins in the hearts and minds of each of us. We must set aside our personal interests and desires, bring together people that are, that love our city and desire to see it flourish. I'm calling on city council and the mayor today to not approve one more spending item on this agenda today until the crime in our city is addressed with adequate resources and programming. What does it matter if we get our recycling picked up weekly? But body bags clean our streets. Every resource that the city of Shreveport has should go, should go to fighting crime and creating programs to train up the next generation of leaders. We may disagree in many areas, but the one area I know we all can agree on is that we're tired of watching Facebook Live videos of more shootings and murders. I believe we can agree on this because of the lives that have already been lost in our city. Zakarian Hitten, 20. Jamarien Oliver, 18. Antonio Johnson, 38. Takarian John, 17. Tony English, 38. Alan Jefferson, 41. Nicholas Sparks, 25. Taylor Bowers, 28. Nicholas Toms, 23. Trevante Miles, 28. Nicholas Mason, 23. Tration Bogan, 25. Rodney Claiborne, 29. Kalen Williams, 21.
Mr. Tim.
Kelly Grant.
How many more you have? I'm gonna let you finish the ninth, but your time is...
I've got 61 names to mention, sir.
How many more did you have as questions?
Close to 40. Would you like me to continue?
Please, sir.
Kalen Williams, 21. Kelly Grant, 39. Robert Lenham, 57. Kevin Brazil, 23. Chasman Marshall, 32. Eric Young, 30. Chad Hill, 22. Quadavious Key, 18. Jacety Fisher, 28. Maya Patel, 5. Xavier Griffin, 19. Doron Harden, 49. Jelicia Jennings, 30. Kurjan Mingo, 38. Kervin Germany, 39. Trayvon Grant, 27. Emmanuel King, 19. Quadrick Mahoney, 36. Tammy Harris, 48. Faye Winslow, 53. Antonio Robertson, 15. Zion Adams, 22. Desmond Jackson, 36. Devonte Patterson, 21. Carlos Daniels, 16. Dominique Roland, 32. Jordan Lee, 18. Shamika Robinson, 29. Zanaria Theus, 18. Givante Punch, 20. Kenshin Cole, 20. Melvin Williams, 19. Daryl Lafitte, 50. Dan Kosky, 42. Jeremiah Dotty, 23. Demon Washington, 21. Patrick Goines, 32. Shamaya Little, 17. Calvin Raphael, 21. Tequarian Thomas, 20. Javerias DeBois, 23. Daniel Brown, 27. Cedric Fuller, 45. Brennan Johnson, 25. Lazarus Thomas, 34. Paris King, 19. Cavante DeGrau, 13. Lederick Grant, 19. While I may have missed a few, this is just a representation of the state of emergency Shreveport is in.
Rudolph Glass?
Good afternoon. Rudolph Glass, 1735 Arlington, Shreveport, Louisiana. I just have something I was thinking about, and I happened to write it down. I've been, I'm 57 years old. I lived in the neighborhood that I'm in. Now, my mom bought the house when I was a year old, and I'm back in that house after her passing. Shreveport has been a place of gun violence for a few years. All this started many years ago. Neglected neighborhoods, closing schools, discontinuing vocational courses in schools, busting children across town, discrimination and systemic... busting children across town, discrimination, and systemic racism. When these words are heard, people scrunch and try not to hear. But it's real and it's happening as we speak. Even now, people, lives are being used as though they are pieces of a chess game. You cannot misuse and discriminate and oppress any persons and not be affected. These people, as guilty of this, didn't realize that they have to leave their gated communities. They will see these people at department stores, schools, hospitals, and the State Fair, and many, many venues. I saw a statement on Facebook. A young man said that some people were upset with him because he said that he did not believe in Jesus and that the church and so many so-called Christians had their chance with him for twenty-four years. There are so many reasons that things are the way they are. Discipline. When I went to the military, when we first arrived to the reception station, discipline started, the minute we stepped off that bus. They knew if they, they knew that if we were not disciplined, it would be very hard or impossible to teach and train us. This was the first step to becoming a soldier as well as an upstanding citizen. My neighborhood, as most predominantly African-American neighborhoods, are neglected. We have called and reported problems and concerns and has usually failed on deaf ears. I used to wonder why some people just let issues go without attempting to do something about it. Well, just like a relationship, if one party is ignored, the other soon disconnect and things go downhill. Some of the citizens in this city have no faith in their local government, which has led to hopelessness, distrust, and moral decay. You know, I, I do some things around here and people, some people know me. But as I look at this, and if this, if this is not talked about, and therewith, Shreveport is gonna be worse off than what we are now. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask that you do not applaud. This is a city council meeting, and one of the rules of the council is that you cannot applaud. I wish we could, but it's against the rule, okay? Thank you.
I have Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, apartment M one-ten, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. What did one volcano say to the other volcano? "I lava you." What musical instrument is always found in the bathroom? A tuba toothpaste. Now, for the sublime from the ridiculous. The good news I bring today is that MDA called to tell me that they received one hundred and eighty-five dollars of the donation that I sent and not to worry. I was afraid that Hurricane Ida might have tried to mess things up. I'm just glad it didn't. I'm starting a brand-new collection leading up to twenty twenty-two. Also, Patrick Cantley recently won the BMW title and the FedEx Cup title, one week right after another, on the Golf Channel. I was watching, by the way. We still need help in the Highland area for all people who are driving and are red-light runners. We still need yellow-trimmed traffic lights and sensor cameras to help out, too. We're not going to continue putting up with this, with these bunch of old red-light runners. Enough is enough. People have been making a lot of complaints about it. They keep saying that they want it to stop like a red light, and I really wish that they would, but we don't have the sensor cameras or yellow-trimmed traffic lights to do something about this, and we do need the help very much. Somebody could either get hurt or they could get killed. There have been too much of this fussing and complaining about it, and I've been the one who's had to voice this. And Grayson Boucher, knowing that you're the head of the Public Safety Committee, maybe you could get this going for us to kind of help us out, if you would. It would really please, it would really be appreciated, and we don't need these accidents to happen. We have enough red-light runners as it is and too many complaints about it. And also, I'd just like to say that, first of all, COVID-nineteen is still hanging around. Maybe it's hanging around upside down from a rafter in the attic, and I wish it would. And of course, it's freaked out and wacky. And it can still kiss my grits.
Uh, Mr. Brick of Peoples.
Good evening, city council. Brick of Peoples, four hundred block Mohawk Trail. Let me step back for a second to follow the people's promises and also the local chairwoman of the people's new Black Panther Party. No matter what our differences may be, we have one thing in common, and it's, is my thing working? Because I, y'all love taking our people mics. Um, we, we have one, we have one thing in common. We all have one goal, and it's to solve these murders. If anyone disagrees with me, raise your hand. Since you didn't raise your hand, I see you all agree with me. Whatever our differences is, the fact still remain, we must follow, find a way to solve these murders. One way to solve our, solve our problems is to see how they solved them in the past. In the past, we solved them with police involvement. Most of you know my mom is a sergeant of SPD. One way to solve our problems is to go by what we did in the past. As example, there was an officer. You look at his records of cases, ninety-five percent of the cases were solved successfully because he was doing what I do, going out in the community, talking to the people, engaging in the community. That's the proven way of how we solve some of our problems. Rod Demery was in the community, engaging with the people, and talking to the people, helping solve our problems. If anybody disagrees with me, please raise your hand. None of I see no showing hands, I assume you agree with me. Ain't that right, Councilwoman Taylor? I spoke to Rod Demery, and he agreed to help us solve our problem. Since we are in agreement that this man is a good to help solve our problem, and no one has asked, why has no one asked him to help solve our problem? Is it because we don't want our problems solved? We all know that's not the case, ain't that right, Jerry Bowman?
Ma'am, would you suspend, ma'am, would you suspend just a minute? I, I want you to be aware that the rule says you cannot call a...
I'm the only one that you apply to. Don't make me go back to the past meetings.
Council meeting by name. I'm just saying.
Don't make me go back to the past meetings, because I'm the only one that apply to, because you know I would hit you with a lawsuit.
Do not use the council person's name.
But I'm the only one that applies to, I would hit you with a lawsuit.
Got you.
Solutions are available to us. We in Shreveport are asking you to set aside your differences and call Rod Demery to help solve our problems. I know y'all don't like me, but one thing would differ between me and y'all. No. One thing between me and different y'all, when the people call me, I come. When they ask for solutions, I bring it. When I, I also bring results. We are streets, we are, we are the street team in Shreveport.
You're always welcome here.
No, 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 no. Your problem is you don't want nobody to address you. I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the council as a whole, not just one person. Now, you have a good day, and I hope y'all call Rod Demery to help solve his problems. And I'm gonna go back on the past meetings and see who else you address to as I do, because I would hit you with a lawsuit real quick. Play with me.
Eric Haley.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everybody that's here, to the council member. This is my first time here. I never met the mayor. Councilman Bowman is my, is my councilman. I've been in contact with him. Um, I, what I come to say is this. I've been shot at seventeen times here in Shreveport, Louisiana. I got hit two times in Atlanta, Georgia. One time, I almost lost my life in Atlanta, Georgia. Seventeen times, Wickerson Terrace. I was, I was the security that got beat up, jumped on by the whole apartment complex. Woodland Terrace, I was shot at. Jackson Heights, I was shot at. But what I come to tell you that this, for all of us to tackle this crime, okay? We need to do what the old heads used to do. They gone on. When I was growing up, we used to have preachers marching in the community. They're not doing it anymore. Back in the day, they had a city riot. I was here. There was one or two men that came down here and stopped that riot down. Calvin Pope and Dick Gregory. You got what I'm saying? See, the thing is this, okay? Y'all are the councilmen, but when we had it hit, none of y'all said anything, we're coming out. But I invited y'all out. It don't matter who it is, I invited y'all out, I said, turn to three feet. At five-thirty, at forty-two ten Greenwood Lane, which is Village Square. We're having a technical, I can run it back. If one preacher ain't gonna do it, I'm gonna do it. I have a little preacher up on my side. I have been, I've got in touch with the mayor, I got the sheriff department's trying to be there, I got in touch with the city, city officers, all this. Let us all come together. If y'all wanna do something, if y'all wanna make a difference, then don't sit behind this chair, in this chair. Get out into the community and let these people see you more like they did in Atlanta, Georgia. I've been there, I've seen it, I've fought my life. I, I'm from Old Town. I'm from Far East Oaks. We are gonna take this city back. If y'all gonna help me, come on out. We are gonna take this city back. We got to let these young people know that they cannot have Shreveport. Lot of the young, lot of the older folks are scared to come out at night. I remember the time when it's Friday night and leave my doors open. Your best mind, but it's true. Can't do it no more. Can't do it no more. The reason why I've, I've been shot at seventeen times and had ring death, death, because of what I've been through. I'm not going through it no more, I'm freaking tired of it. And I'm just asking y'all, light of the world gospel, ministry and corporation is gonna take, we gonna take this city back. We're bringing other ministers, celebrities out here in Shreveport. And I thank you all, brother, um, co, um, Bowman. I know your dad, he was my head, he was my head, man. I know all of y'all. Know your mama, too, so I'm just letting y'all know. Please, if you will, y'all come on out to forty-two ten Greenwood Lane, apartment, I'm in that apartment building six hundred, in the, in the play, in the playground here. And we, we would love to have you out. And I would like to say, how you doing, Pastor Green? Glad to see you. You know, one of the best pastors in the state of Shreveport, I mean, the city of Shreveport. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And you, you are aware that I marched nine months with Dick Gregory as well?
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, you know what I'm talking about. I was here when that riot started. And like I said, you know what I'm saying, it's just time to stop. If you'd have been beat up, stabbed, shot, then you know when to stop. I've been in one of the worstest neighborhoods in America, and I was shot down in one of the neighborhoods in America that has been yours, in Atlanta, Georgia. So, you know what I'm saying, it's a time to stop. Light of the world is here, and we gonna be doing some things, we gonna be doing some bike riding against crime. We gonna do it all. Thank you.
Kimberly Jones.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Jones at two-five-two East Seventy-first Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero six. What I'm here for is to invite the council members that represent the Cedar Grove community. Councilmember Nicholson, who I appreciate for immediately replying. Councilmember Fuller, who I appreciate for applying, and we're waiting for your confirmation. Councilman Butcher and Councilman Green. And Mayor, we appreciate that you are not gonna be available, but you have forwarded my information to Africa Price, who we're expecting some information from her. So this is the information that I had emailed the council members on August the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, September the second, twenty twenty-one, and again on September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The Cedar Grove Affirms Real Effort Care Neighborhood Association invites our elected officials to our Accountability Day on October the second, twenty twenty-one, five-thirty to seven o'clock at seven-nine-three-one Thornhill Avenue, zip code seven one one zero six. All CDC guidelines will be followed. It is a great opportunity for your constituents in our community to meet and greet their elected officials, including property standards, sheriff, police, firemen, registrars, and the DA office. We also plan to invite the media. Please be prepared to discuss the following. Subjects concerning our community, economic development, neighborhood beautification, crime prevention, affordable housing, mental health resources, infrastructure, and addition one is redistricting. If you have any questions or concern, please contact Ms. Ora Hart, who's the president of the Care Community Neighborhood Association. Please reply, and this specifically go to Councilman Butcher and Councilman Green. In advance, thank you for your cooperation, and we look forward to your presence on our Accountability Day in October. This is gonna be the first of more meetings with updates, because we gonna hold you accountable for whatever you tell us. Thank you.
Roxanne Johnson.
My mayor. Chief, it's good to see you. Hello to all of you. It's good to be here and see all of you. My name is Roxanne Johnson. Can you hear me? I don't have much, I don't have much of a voice. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Roxanne Johnson, eighty-four fifty-five Fern Avenue, seven eleven fifteen. I would like to speak on behalf of Charlotte Edwards. She is a woman that I highly admire and deeply respect. To write a letter is one thing, but today I thought I would come and stand with her. These last five months have been difficult for her. Every disappointing postponement, every additional request, there were accusations that she never addressed, ugly slander, things that happened, to put it lightly. She carried it with dignity, with grace, and with silence. Many here have even said that few even knew her name. Well, I knew it well, especially her integrity. With that being said, allow me to tell you why I believe the letter of intent was selected to be awarded to Ms. Edwards, why she is qualified to dispose of recycled materials. In the area of environmental health, Ms. Edwards is an environmental health policy major and graduated with a Master of Science in Public Health from Tulane University. She has served as a professor at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, providing instruction in environmental science. She has worked with the University of Texas in instrumental design and served as a subject matter expert in environmental toxicology and health impacts. Her professional acumen is well documented. She's well-trained, and she's an exceptional trainer in working knowledge of the Clearwater Act, lead and copper rule, and everything you could possibly want to know about OSHA. In Atlanta, Georgia, she was asked to develop the health and safety courses. She delivered OSHA-specific training to ensure compliance standards. She presented EPA awareness and compliance review sessions. Recycling is, of course, we know, the process of collecting and processing materials that would otherwise be thrown away as trash and turned, instead turned into new products. We believe that recycling can... We believe that recycling can benefit our community again, our economy, and the environment. This is about reducing carbon emissions. This is about environmental health. She is an expert in the field of environmental science. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
James Robinson. State your name, and you have three minutes, Mr. Robinson. And Roger DeKay can get ready afterwards. Thank you.
My name is James Robinson. I live at 434 Chalk Talk Trail, Shreveport, Louisiana. We're here today to address issue about the liquor store being open on North Market. Well, we don't need another liquor store. We don't need no liquor stores. There was another liquor store that was closed down over twenty-five years ago, right across the street from Shopper Value, what they call, now we call it Countermarket. But it hadn't been open over twenty-five, thirty years. Just a liquor on North Market, been serving North Market to everybody around here all those years. And I'm quite sure they would not run out of it if you wanna go get your stuff. We don't need that. What we need is, I'm talking about, the problem is that this bringing on a lot of crime, the alcohol and drugs and all this stuff, this part of your crime. It seems like to me, we wanna let things like this build up to bring more instead of tearing it down. I watch the news all the time. And I sit down, I listen, I listen at the mayor, I listen at the city councilman, I listen at y'all talk. And you talking about we need to do this to bring crime down. We don't need another liquor store. That man had a list of, I think, what, sixty-five, sixty-some people's names he just called? And if you listen to him call the name, from thirty and under were more name on the list than there was anybody else. Let me tell you something. If you take the time out to drive around this city, in the city of Shreveport, you gonna find out that you got more standing on the corners in certain places. They drunk all day. They get up in the morning, waiting for the store to open up to buy alcohol. Might not be happening in your neighborhood, but it's happening in mine. I live in this again. They can't wait for the liquor store to open up. Mr. Taylor, you know what I'm talking about. And it's sad that we can't get together as grown people that we have selected to hold office and come together and work together to get this crime done, taken care of. It's sad. We got pastors, I'm right myself, we got pastors, we got associate ministers, we got all these people in our neighborhoods, but none of them stood up and talked to y'all and get y'all to come and work together with us. And y'all need to come together and work with us. I don't understand why, when we're gonna have a meeting, the mayor can't be there, he gonna say somebody. The city councilman can't come, they gonna say somebody. Why? Why, what you afraid of? I wanna know what you afraid of. Before you became a city councilman, before you became a mayor, you was able to work? Why you can't come now? Is it because you won't do your job? You scared somebody will say something to you about you not doing your job? We need to work together. We all, we human, all of us human beings, we need to work together. That's the only way we gonna get things done in this city. If we can't do it that way, you gonna continue to have a problem in this city, I promise you.
Good time.
Now, like I said, it's time for us to come together and work together and stop playing around and clowning.
Well, my name is Roger DeKay. I live in 1069 Box Hall Drive here in Shreveport. And I'm here to represent the owner of the property that was just discussed on North Market. It fits all the criteria for a packaged liquor store. And as the director of the Metropolitan Plan Commission said, if not here, where? It's a commercial district. If you look at the circle that they drew around the site, there are no houses, there are no churches. I mean, it's a commercial corridor. Somebody mentioned to me, or mentioned at the MPC meeting, that by goodness, there are no drive-through liquor stores down in southeast Shreveport. Well, the Thrifty Liquor in front of the Kroger on Elleby Road has a drive-through. So, they're everywhere. This is just another business. The gentleman that wants to open the business is a fine fella. He doesn't have any black marks on his record. And I understand that members of the community don't like it, but this is a legitimate business, and it's already zoned adequately. It's a commercial corridor, and it could be worse. The place used to be a ballroom about five, six years ago. With that, use your judgment. I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. DeKay, while you're here, my appreciation is that city councils here and in other parts of Louisiana have broad discretion to regulate alcohol. Do you think that's a fair statement of the law? Broad discretion?
Well, I'm certainly not a lawyer, but...
Oh, you're not, oh, I'm sorry, you're not a lawyer.
I'm a commercial real estate broker.
Oh, I apologize. I thought you said you were representing.
No, I didn't study hard enough. My mama told me to study, and I didn't. So, here I'm a real estate agent instead of a lawyer.
I will not put you to the screws about the law. I'll save that for somebody else.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
All righty.
Tom Arsenault.
Good afternoon. Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, 71101. I represent Sing Two LLC, who is the applicant in connection with zoning case 21118C. I sent all of you a letter. I think the letter sets forth what the position is. Mr. DeKay adequately described the surrounding area of this place. In my letter, I outlined for you a number of different locations within the city that are actually not as good a place as this one is. And yet, the city, over time, has approved liquor stores in those locations. Mr. Nicholson, you can aim that at me. I am a lawyer. But what I would say to you is, your discretion is not unfettered, and you are not able simply to say, we don't, we won't have any more liquor stores. There's a whole different policy discussion about that. But that's not something the city has said, or do I believe it could say. So, when you choose locations and places meet the requirements for that, and the MPC staff has laid out how it ought to work and made a positive recommendation, and then you decide to affirm an erroneous decision by the MPC in this case, then I think that you are going beyond your discretion. So, I understand everyone's feelings. I share many of your feelings. But the fact of the matter is that this is a location that meets all the criteria to place a liquor store. And you do not have the discretion, in my view, to deny it. You have the right to vote that way, but you may not have the legal discretion to do it.
May I interrupt, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Your thoughts on the master plan? When we changed our way of doing things under Sweeney, you remember? One of the criteria, as I understand previous city attorneys telling us, that we had to say why, you know, that liquor store won't work there. We had to give a reason. One of the reasons was public safety. That's the way I remembered. I know we had one on Linwood under Ms. Stephanie Lynch that we voted down because of public safety. Is that what you understand by master plan, giving one of the reasons? I mean, it was servile, but one of them, as I remember, was public safety.
Mr. Chairman, that certainly would be an important consideration. And if you look at the site plan for this, it's well lit. It's on a very highly trafficked area in North Shreveport. And in fact, there probably not another high-traffic, more high-traffic area than this particular area. So, it's an intensive use. It's zoned that way. And this is a location that is not close to residential development. As, you know, because of the way Shreveport develops, a lot of liquor stores are close to residential development. This one is not. And so, I urge you, please, to overturn the MPC and approve this application. Happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Arson, you're not only a lawyer, you're the best lawyer in the room. So, I'll ask a couple more questions while I have you on somebody else's.
Mr. Latier probably disagrees with you, but that's all right, Mr. Nicholson.
It's one, I don't, well, anyway, I was being something.
Miss Fleming's is back. You got a lot of good lawyers in the room, Mr. Nicholson.
Best private lawyer in the room, how about that? Mr. Latier.
You don't want to be asked questions.
That's right, okay. Excluding the city attorney. And really, I just, I wanna understand your thoughts on this in your capacity as counsel for the applicant. Is, for example, community opposition, the opposition of neighbors in this area, a permissible factor for the council to consider in deciding whether to allow liquor stores in this location?
Well, let me address that because the opposition that is coming is not from people that live anywhere near, unless you very broadly define this. There are no people who live near this particular liquor store. There are people who live nearby, but they don't neighbor it. They can't get there across the entrance to North Highlands is away from here. So, there really is not an issue here of people. And the council, of course, has several times approved liquor stores in areas with significant community opposition.
What, what about the proximity of the proposed site to other liquor stores? I've been told that a number of other liquor stores are fairly nearby. Is that a factor that we can permissibly consider in this?
Actually, I don't think it is. And I'll give you some history. There was a time when our neighbor across the river had a limit on the number of liquor licenses that there could be. And what that provided was a wonderful opportunity for corruption. So, when you begin to determine that particular areas shouldn't have something within a certain number of feet, then what you should do is put that into your zoning ordinance. Put that into the UDC. There are some provisions of the UDC that have such spacing requirements, but liquor stores are not among them.
Well, I'll just say generally that, like Chairman Flurry and Councilman Taylor, whose district this concerns, I'm very concerned about the connection between liquor stores and crime. Very recently, we had someone murdered in cold blood in the parking lot of a liquor store in the middle of the night. And I certainly respect the fine job you do for all your clients, but I'm very much inclined to support Councilman Taylor in opposing a liquor store. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
Yes, Sam, oh, yes, I do, Rick Holland. Good afternoon. Rick Holland, 330 North Wickford Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7115. It's great to hear the debate that we can have in our country over stuff like this, but there's a few key points I wanted to point out as having served on the zoning board of appeals for eighteen years as a volunteer. And I think that our charge during those times is very similar to yours. And that's number one, to protect the public, especially from the things that are illegal. But it's also part of our job to promote opportunity, business, and jobs on the things that are legal. And there are examples. I'll give you one that I can remember vividly years ago. All the way out Elleby Road into a restaurant that wanted to add alcohol called Hill Country. And most of the residents in that area were against it. But the very facts, the staff did their research. You have a very excellent staff. They measured the strengths and the weaknesses of the for and against and realized that this, again, was another high-end business that senses flourish. And I don't think there's been any complaints in the last fifteen to twenty years. So, the research, we all have our opinions, and that's what's great about America. But again, the professionals, which y'all put a great staff together over the years, I've never seen a report so positive of the applicant, who's already proven himself before on another location, in the location. So, I recommend you trust the people that you depend on to give you the advice about what is good and what is bad for this part of the community. Thank you for your perspective.
Thank you.
Evelyn Phillips.
Good afternoon to Mayor Perkins, to the members of the city council. My name is Evelyn Whitson Phillips. I live at 1126 Greystone Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. And I'm here to represent the Cherokee Holland Park neighborhood. And we are in total opposition to Mr. Sing Two LLC, DBA, being permitted to receive a license to open a drive-by liquor store at 1608 North Market. On August 5th, 2021, about twelve of our neighborhood members, who are property owners, attended a meeting with him. We stood and we listened to his plans to open a drive-by liquor store. At the same time, he told us of his concerns of remodeling the building a little. And he was going to prepare items for the members to come through there to buy meals of food and chips. However, at the same time, they told us this. We were told that the people who came to this facility would not be able to come within the building. The only way they could get anything that they were selling at this facility, they had to get it through the drive-by window. After listening to him, we asked some questions. Why a liquor store in this area? He's selling liquor. "That's my business," he responded to us. That he's a businessman who sells liquor, and he wanted to increase his business. We had asked, because of our concern, where you live? His response, "I live in Bowser City." And we said, "If you live in Bowser City, please make us understand why you will not try to open a business in Bowser City where you live." His response to us was, "Bowser City will not let him sell daiquiris." And he wanted to sell daiquiris at this business too. We said, "Now, you have two liquor stores in Shreveport, Louisiana. Now, why do you need to have another one? I can offer a couple of people some jobs at my business." At a business that they will not be able to come in? Really? We don't believe that Shreveport, Louisiana, should allow him to receive a license to open a drive-by liquor store. Why do we feel that way? From downtown Shreveport to the Pine Hill Road, you're gonna pass by at least fourteen places where you can get liquor. Thrifty Liquor, CVS Pharmacy, Shopper's Value, Brookshire Grocery and Pharmacy, Walgreens, Raceway Grocery Store, Shell's Grocery Store, Stations, Daiquiri Express, Exxon Gas Station. All of these are located on North Market. Do we need more liquor on North Market? And let us not forget that A&amp;W Shop on Grimmet Drive and Shreveport Supermarket on North Thomas, which is in our community. which is in our community, all sell liquor. There is no need for Shreveport and this area of town to open a drive-by liquor store. Simply because we understand that we have plenty of businesses in our area where you can drive by to get some food. We thank them, we appreciate them, but we need something larger. We need more things than our, we can bring our children to sit down and have a family dinner. But businesses and groups and associations can come and they can bring their people with them. We do not need a drive-by liquor store. We all cry because of the crime that's going on in our city. But research has proven everywhere around the United States of America that stores of this nature increase the crime within the communities. We're asking you, please consider the fact that the Metropolitan Planning Committee on the first of September denied them the right to have a license to open a drive-by liquor store. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips, do you have that petition? Ms. Phillips?
I beg your pardon.
Ms. Phillips, do you have the petition?
Oh, yes ma'am, so sorry, the man got me all upset. I am serious. I mean, please, please, these are signatures of property owners in our area and those of us who are here, who physically came to this meeting, would you please stand? Thank you.
Thank you.
Randall Ross. Randall Ross. Trevor Allen. Trevor Allen. Burl Cawtham.
To Mayor Perkins and to Chief Whitehorn and to all of the council members and the constituents who have gathered here today, I too would like to speak on the behalf of Ms. Charlotte Edwards and her recycling project. As a pastor, I have worked with her in the past on many projects in our community to make a difference. And she has done so well, not just with follow-up, because a lot of times our follow-up is inclusive of just talking about the same old things. But she is very great with follow-through. And so, I would like to speak to her business acumen and think, and I am thankful for her, and I believe that it is something that we need to welcome into our fair city. We have heard the concerns of our citizens here today, and they have shared about the crime in our city. And we've talked about so many things. I believe her project could be one that could integrate even to our school systems, whereby we are now having an outreach program where students can have community service. Within the organizations that I am a part of and working with young people, oftentimes they're asking for community service. And this would be another avenue for them to get off of the street, have something to do, and have the opportunity to gain that community service and to give back. It's a win-win project. She also would like to do curbside. So, we see as we maneuver throughout our city that there's trash everywhere. A lot of the trash that we see on the sides of the road, that, that trash is most often given over to recyclable material. So, her project is a great project. I hope that you will consider her and that you will consider working with her. And look at that proposal one more time. So many have said that they have not heard of who she is, but I think we need to welcome her into a new space. One of the things that we want to do with our citizens through outreach and education, I think that if we move people and if we move citizens like Ms. Edwards into these spaces, then those people like myself and those people that I know will be able to move into a space where now we are connecting with one another and we're engaging with one another. Thank you for your time and attention here today. I hope that, again, that I have left Ms. Edwards on your hearts and on your minds.
Pastor Thomas Miles.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Thomas Miles, seventy-two oh five Bob Hill Circle, Shreveport. And I'm here today, um, to speak on behalf of the New Birth Baptist Church, whom I pastor in this community, eight thirty-six North Market. We already have Thrifty Liquor less than a mile from my current church. Um, so, for the, the, the community of North Shreveport, the last thing that we need, uh, and let me, let me preface this by saying I'm a proponent of small business, but not a liquor store that's not going to help, um, the social economics place there in our community. So, I'm saying today to you all that we do not need another liquor store on the North Market Corridor where there is a fair share of liquor already there. Um, and, and to say, uh, there's not a community, um, right across the street, there's a Barton Drive Apartments there, uh, that we've just had, um, an outreach, um, program there. So, there is a community there in, on the North Market Corridor. There's a community there that's less than a, a mile exactly from where, uh, where this liquor store is wanting to be put. So, I'm saying today that, uh, when we look at, um, the nature of what it's going to bring versus what we are having trying to restore in our community, um, it is not a good fit for the North Market Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. Vernon Bright. Vernon Bright. Marvin Mohammed. Also want to recognize Commissioner Lyndon Johnson in the back.
Marvin Mohammed, eleven sixteen, uh, Prospect Street. About six weeks ago, I attended the funeral of my twenty-two-year-old nephew. And I watched my sister grieve over him. My mind went to his eighteen-month-old son. I started off by saying that this city has failed. This administration, this council, never having the ability to agree on anything to move the city forward. Quite recently, there's recommendations by the administration, I assume, to allocate thirteen million dollars to public safety. All because, I guess, in, in southeast Shreveport, now crime, shootings has now arrived there. But I say to you, Mr. Mayor, to pour thirteen million dollars into public safety, uh, substitute chief, Chief Smith, he can arrest five hundred tomorrow. But if we don't see in those very same spaces that we weed from, it would simply leave, uh, vacuums of opportunity for more to enter. So, little Johnny, because the conditions haven't changed, we simply replace little Bobby Ray, who was arrested last week. So, the city must do better. The city must do better by increasing the, the, the Department of Community Development budget by thirty or forty percent and using those dollars to eliminate blight, eliminate darkness, eliminate death and desolation. Because that's what we have. We, we are telling you, little young black boys to, who feel like they're living, uh, to survive only, and then hopefully to escape, and then to be traumatized by the loss of their thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old classmate, either to death or to, and, and go to state penitentiary. So, we must do better. So, I would ask that we don't move forward with anything in public safety until we begin to put money into programs for our children. The summer youth job program should receive a quadruple, uh, allotment. Whatever the budget was last year, this December during bu- budget meeting, and I'm gonna need a little more time. We should receive.
Mr. Mohammed, I can, I can give you thirty, I can do thirty more seconds of what I gave everybody, which is what I gave everybody else thirty seconds.
I just, I just listen to y'all give, uh, Councilman, uh, literally five, six minutes, asking him question after question after question.
It's because he asked a question, Mohammed.
Allow him to, to expand fully what's in his breast. See, this is the problem, Councilman Bowman, we have to stop this.
I was trying to tell you how to extend your time, Mohammed, that's all it was. I mean, you, y'all.
I need more than thirty seconds. I need more than thirty seconds.
I'm, I'm actually.
And I'm not trying to be, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, Councilman, Councilman Bowman, but I was displeased when I, as I was coming here, I was looking at the meeting, and I, and I watched how Councilman Flurry said, "No clapping." I watched how you told someone, "Hey, your time is, your time is up." See, if we want peace in the city, it has to start here. This place ha- this place have to set the example of lawful deliberative dialogue.
Mr. Mohammed, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Okay. We, um, you just talked about the money that we're allocating toward from ARP funding, correct, to public safety?
Yes, sir.
Did you see on that same sheet, did you see how much we were allocating to community development?
No, sir, I did.
We're de- we're dedicating three million additional dollars to community development. Also, you know, we're in the middle of budgeting cycle right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, we're gonna be briefing the city council on the bump that will be given to community development. So, I'd be, it'd be great if you showed up at those, um, budget meetings as well and gave us feedback, but their budget will be plussed up as well. We understand the holistic approach that you're talking about tonight, so.
I appreciate it, and I will be, I be, I will be attending over minutes.
Also too, Mr. Mohammed, if you, if you look down on the council agenda, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're moving to property standards to combat blight within the inner city. Fifteen thousand dollars of that are allocated because our inspectors have been going out and guns have been pulled on them for bulletproof vests. So, in order to go over here and combat their broken window theory, that is another incident of what we have on the agenda on today.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Taylor. And I'm gonna conclude, uh, Councilman Bowman, there's two small, two or three small points. About two months ago or so, maybe six weeks ago, uh, Councilwoman Taylor, she introduced a resolution to, uh, ask for a more random on the oil and gas leases, particularly in, in city council A. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna ask you to stand with the citizens of Shreveport, particularly, uh, in, uh, city council District A, because I believe Resolution eighty-seven or eighty-nine is asking you, uh, you asking for permission to sign and give them the right to begin easement. We're gonna ask you to stand with us and not, and not sign that if, if in fact there's more than, if there's, uh, four, four, four votes. I'm hoping that the city council votes that down today because Trinity, uh, LSC hasn't, hasn't been willing to meet with the people in, in city council A. And, and just, just, and just to give you a little something that you can use, because I know a lot, I hear the, the city charter being discussed a lot, uh, city, city, uh, city ordinance chapter twenty-five, section twenty-six, twenty-five, sixteen, and section twenty-five, twenty-seven gives you the right to, to pause, uh, the signing of that agreement due to those, due, due, due to those ordinances that, that is listed out. And because of time, I won't deal with that. Also, I want to say, uh, that liquor store on North Market that is being proposed, it happens to be right next door to a Church of Chicken. High convenient. We, see, we, we, we have to stop that. So, I really appreciate it, uh, Councilman Bowman, uh, but I would pray, and, Mr. Chair, and all due respect, I would pray that we listen to the people. The people are coming down here to speak to y'all, to speak their heart. It is critical that this body begins to set the tone throughout the city so we can stop the rash of violence. I appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
Leon Emanuel. He was out on the, he was in the overflow, I don't know if he's left already. Is he still out in the overflow? You see, Mr. Emanuel out there? He did leave. There was a... Kenneth Howard.
How y'all doing today, uh? My name is Kenneth Howard, seven fifty-four Woodman Place, Ohio State. I was kind of hoping that wouldn't happen, that the mirror would be gone by the time I get to speak, but, uh, I just push forward anyway. I come in a concern of, uh, of the crime that's been going on in the neighborhoods. Uh, I'm part of a, a uprising, a grass group, uh, with Stop the Violence, with, uh, you know, we're trying to, uh, collab with the parents and also y'all. I see how some of the people, I, I don't, I don't really like that, man, how, how we kind of clashing with one another instead of coming together to be able to kind of resolve the problem that's really going on. And, uh, as y'all been kind of seeing lately, uh, it don't matter what the color of your skin. Crime is pretty much kind of happening all over the place now. It's getting out of hand, as y'all can see. And, uh, it's kind of start happening with our little kids now, you see what I'm saying? Now, it get to an age to where, you know, twenty, twenty-one up, they can kind of discern the things that they do to kind of take their own punishments. But on the inside of these household with the babies and the kids, we gotta do a little bit better, y'all. And with that being said, I'm not gonna blame y'all, because guess what? Y'all have households to take care of y'all selves, right? We have households to take care of ourselves, but what we're saying, what I'm saying is, we gotta all do it together. Y'all gotta put in place laws and restrictions to these parents. At this point in time, what's going on is too out of hand. Y'all gotta take accountability and start blaming, I mean, to, uh, to start faulting these parents for allowing their kids at thirteen and fifteen and, and those young ages to have those type of things in their households. You see what I'm saying? So, when their kids going out here and they out past the time, curfew and things like that and things happening, guess what? The parents are accountable for that, you see what I'm saying? They're still up under the household and the rules and regulations of their parents, you see what I'm saying? So, if we don't start taking it to the households with the way they raising their kids and allowing them to get out of hand the way they, it ain't gonna never get, uh, uh, it ain't gonna never come, uh, come to play. We ain't gonna never be able to stop the crime with what's kind of like going on. Y'all just seen, he, he read out right about six-some names. Most of those is babies, you see what I'm saying? And those are babies right in the households of a, with their parents, you see what I'm saying? So, that's where the problem starts at. So, my, again, my name is Kenneth Howard, and, and I'm here fresh, man. With Stop the Violence, I'm along with Br- Br- Bracca people and a whole lot of, uh, commu- of, uh, activists that are actually really trying to beat the pavement on trying to get this crime stopped, you see what I'm saying? So, I would, I would like it, you know, and we can all kind of work together. Somebody can kind of start reaching out to us so we can start getting off up into these communities to be able to start having some things for the kids, and that's another thing, uh, they spoke on that. There's nothing in the community right now, nothing. You see what I'm saying? Ultimately, absolutely nothing, because it's all shut down, you know what I'm saying? We gotta bring that back up, man. That's another thing. You know, money need to be start going back down to the communities to be able to build those up. We gotta get the trash off them streets, man. We gotta start making it, we gotta change their mindsets. Because what they live in is the environment and the product of their environment. What they see, they, they rose with it. Let's stop building up everything that's already built up, man. Let's start back going down to the communities where, where the problem is, i- i- is, is based at, you see what I'm saying? And once we start being able to kind of do that, everything else can kind of start coming along. Anything, anybody got any questions, anything?
If that's a good contact number that you left on your, uh, on the sheet, then, uh,
Most definitely, Mr. Bowman.
We'll reach out to you.
All right.
I understand, I, I appreciate your remarks, and I, I think it would be appropriate for the council and the administration to have another look at the city's curfew law.
Right, right. I'm telling y'all, I was screaming for cutting y'all, but that is where it gonna start at. I know they might not, y'all might not want to do that, but I promise y'all, if y'all start making the parents be accountable for their kids' actions, I promise you, a lot of things gonna change, because don't nobody want to go no jail behind some of their kids out there doing. But it's their fault because they allowing their kids to be out at certain times of the night, they allowing them to do any and everything they want. They not checking their backpacks, they not checking their phones, they not checking their records. So, guess, guess what? That mean they allowed to just do anything. So, if you're not afraid, th- th- us, just, just matter how. So, get, guess what? That mean they allowed to just do anything, so if you're not afraid, th- th- us, just, just a matter of how we growed up. We was afraid to do certain things, because our parents was on our behinds about it. But it, but, but now day and age, you know what I'm saying, different, different, different times are happening. So, they're not afraid. They're not afraid to do the things that they doing. So, if they was afraid to do the things that they were doing, they would, it wouldn't be so much of it. There, there no consequences behind it at this point in time.
I didn't know if you were finished. So, I, I didn't know if that was it. Councilwoman Taylor, you have something?
You have an organization, Mr. Mahoney?
Well, that's what I would tell you. It, it's just kinda upcoming, you know, uh, with Stop the Violence. Uh, that, that's pretty much kinda what it is. Like I say, uh, uh, I, I'm along with, uh, you know, I, I support Barica people. There's, there's another organization, uh, The Path, there are different kinds. See, I, I'm just in it to win it to where I don't care who I'm with. Long as it's for the right to be able to stop the violence with what's going on with our kids, I'm with it. I'm with y'all. That's what I'm saying. I'm not against none of it, 'cause we not gonna agree with each other every day. It's not gonna be peaches and cream every day. You see what I'm saying? But if y'all really feel in y'all hearts that y'all really wanna stop what's going on with all this violence, we gots to come together as a team, as a whole. We can't be pointing fingers on who did what and who ain't did this at the time. It gots to start with all of us together.
Well, I appreciate you, Mr. Howard. We, we, most of the stuff that you just spoke on, we, I think, uh, did we, was it public safety?
Public safety.
We just, we talked about a lot of that then. Um, unfortunately, it wasn't that many, uh, it wasn't that much public, uh, input there. Uh, but most of what you talked about is what we were discussing then, and I think you'll start seeing some of that to come into play real soon. Uh, but I know I myself, we'll, we'll reach out to you. I mean, you, you're right. A lot of us need to start working together and not hit it all the time. Um, we can't point the finger at each other, but we could try to work. We're not gonna always agree.
Right.
Um, but I do wanna try to help and, and, and work with you any way I can. So, uh, I'll be reaching out to you.
My last closing statement, man, I'd just like to say, justice, justice for all these kids, and most definitely my little cousin, Shamaya Little.
Mr. Howard, Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you have your phone, but whatever you, what you said is very refreshing. Take my number down, six-three-five-seven-one-one-eight.
Six-three-five?
Six-three-five-seven-one-one-eight. That's James Green.
James Green.
Most people get me mixed up with Cedric Glover.
Okay, Mr. James, we'll be right back. I'll give you a call. Thank you.
There was another slip I didn't get. That was over there. Oliver. Is it Karita? Okay, Karita Oliver, I'm sorry. State your name. She has three minutes, um.
My name is Karita Oliver. Um, I'm from, I'm from Jamaica, born and raised in Cedar Grove. My birthday, January the first. I got a phone call two days after my birthday. My son was murdered. My son was eighteen years old, Jamarion Oliver. He don't have no background. No, he wasn't perfect, but he wasn't in these streets either. I had him at fifteen. His daddy died when he was eight months. Me, my mom, and my family and his family did the best we could to raise him. He got murdered to street violence. For his graduation, I had to receive his diploma. His birthday just Sunday. He won't be here for his nineteenth birthday. I gotta piece together how to go to a grave, 'cause I haven't been here since I buried him in January. Only, and when I asked the, what's going on with the case, we waiting on the DA. I don't know what y'all can do. God knows, I'm tired of praying. And people wanna take matters in their own hand, but my mama didn't raise me like that. But I'm tired. And when I seen a thirteen-year-old get killed just a week or two ago at Tinseltown, I just wanted to take my girls to the movies. That's scary. To bury your child, but I've been training my child. If I was to ever leave this world, what to do when mama gone? I never prepared myself what to do, but I had to bury my child. That hurtful. Now, I got to see him piece my life together, but yet the killers are still free. I'm not mad at nobody. And I still pray for them kids, even if it was an accident, I still pray for them. 'Cause I don't want no more bloodshed. I just want justice for my child, not only mine, but other mothers, 'cause mothers are hurting. If you never lost a child, I promise you, you don't wanna stand in these shoes and tell nobody it's gonna be okay. It would never be okay. 'Cause that's a piece of me, and that's a piece of somebody else you took. My mama stretched out to the point we don't recognize her some days, but I pray for her strength. And I still pray that they find out what happened to my child instead of saying, "Well, we waiting on the DA." If I had to go over the DA, or whatever I had to do, 'cause he no longer here, so I am his voice. And I would do what I got to do, long as I have breath in my body to get justice, not only for mine, but for everybody else that's hurting. 'Cause there's a hurtful pill to swallow. But I ain't gonna give up until I get that justice. And I'm just asking if y'all, whatever y'all can do to help, it would be a blessing. I'm not mad at nobody. I just want justice for my baby. That's all I want. I thank y'all.
Ms. Oliver?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can, can you give us your son's name again?
Jamarion Oliver. And he was one of the first ones to be killed this year. And even when the coroner's called me, he said he didn't have no background. It wasn't no bulletproof, no bullet residue or nothing on my baby hand. My baby had just got off of work. And it was two days after my birthday. So, now I got to live with this. And I'm gonna figure it out eventually, but I just trying to find peace in something that I'm so lost on. And that's a hurtful pill, but God, I just want justice, y'all. That's all.
Have you talked to my, my, my good friend out here, Save Our Song? Can you, can you speak to her afterwards? Can you speak to her afterwards? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Um, what, you said his birthday is this week?
September nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Green.
Ma'am, I, I can't say. I understand you're hurt. At this particular time, I would like to offer, if we would just have a moment of prayer for you and for your family, that they would gain some strength during this hour. I don't have the words to say to you, but I do know somebody that can and will take care of you, and he will lift you up. He says, "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lean not unto thy own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he'll direct your path." And I'd just like, if it's okay with the chair, that at this particular time, we would just have a moment of silent prayer for you and your family. And I believe that if you believe in Jesus, he will lift your spirit. He will give you new mercies every day of your life. When you wake up in the morning, you say to him, "God, give me strength that I can make this day." And sometimes in life, you have to take it one day at a time, one second at a time. But I do know that I will be putting your name in my prayers every day, you and your family.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, if we would just have a moment of prayer to ask God for strength for this lady and her family. Amen.
Ms. Oliver, please leave your contact information with Miss Tanya, so we can forward that.
Thank you.
If this, if that's the information that's on this sheet.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have, uh, is James Youngblood here? It's not. If it's not, if, if, if Mr. Youngblood's not here, I did just wanna say, um, you know, we heard a lot about, um, that was a touching story. I, I'm sorry I had to say something, but, um, we heard a lot about crime and a lot about violence. It's not that they're to pacify anybody or, uh, and I don't even think it'd help anybody. I, 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 I hadn't been there, so I, I can't answer to that. And she said it got to be hard to stand in those, in those shoes. It has to be hard. I can't blame nobody in here up on this podium for that, and I, and, and we have to blame, you know, we have to take accountability for our own households, for our own neighborhoods. And sometimes some of us just need to look in the mirror. You know, we say things sometimes that offend others, but I, I, we try to cut it like we see it. Uh, and I do honestly believe that this starts at home. We can send them to church. We can send them to school. The school can't raise the kids. Uh, they have an agenda. They have a job to do. Let me say the police, the poli, it's not the police, the police not putting the guns in these youngsters' hands to go and do some of the stuff that they're doing. Uh, so I can't blame the police on that. We got to look in the mirror, and again, we have to have some tough conversations with each other. This is all over. This is just not in one part of town. It's, you probably hearing it more so, because it's somewhere else. Um, and, and other people are engaged now, and I'm, I'm, I'm appreciative of that, but it's, it's still a sad, sad case to now hear from that. We just need to do better, uh, as a whole, and that's, that's, that's all of us. We just need to do better. And we do need to work together, and I appreciate Mr. Howard coming down and speaking. Um, we don't always see eye to eye. We don't see eye to eye up here. I don't see eye to eye with the person that I live with. But at some point, we still have to come together, and that's, 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 that's just what I'm asking for, all of us to try to work together with each other and not point the finger. That's it. Uh, Chairman, that's, that's all for public comments.
Thank you, Councilman Bowman. Uh, I make the motion at this time to postpone the executive appointment of Lieutenant Michael Carter and Sergeant Shannon Hicks. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
And there's a second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, discussion. Councilman Nixon?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I understand the city attorney's to be, opinion to be that our confirmation of, of Lieutenant Carter and Sergeant Hicks is a ministerial act concerning which we have no discretion. And I'd invite the city attorney to, uh, give us advice on that. I'm not interested in taking or refraining from taking any action to result in litigation against the city, uh, particularly, we have an obligation under state law to confirm these appointments.
I agree with my colleague.
Mr. Latier, could you give us some guidance, please?
Section two-two-four-seventy-six, uh, it states that the, uh, police department shall elect or select, uh, two members to serve on the civil service board. And once those individuals are elected, then pursuant to two-two-four-seventy-six, it says that the governing authority, which in this case is the Shreveport City Council, shall appoint, uh, those individuals to the civil service board. We researched and have, have found no exceptions to that. However, um, the issue was brought up with regard to an appointment as opposed to a vote. And it's difficult to tell a council that they have to vote when your vote is a right. So, you have a right to, to choose how you intend to vote. The mechanism to appoint, uh, requires ninety days from the date in which the vacancy becomes open. So, the appointment date would actually be October thirteenth, but I believe that's the ninety-day expiration date. Uh, with regard to whether or not it's a ministerial duty, uh, I think that there has to be a ruling from a court of law with regard to whether or not you have to compel or can compel a council person to actually cast a vote, uh, for an individual. So, in every regard, uh, we do have ninety days to make a permanent decision on whether or not you're going to appoint him as opposed to, appoint them as opposed to casting a vote. And so, that's my opinion.
Any further discussion?
Is your opinion, Mr. Latier, that postponing this will not expose the city to litigation?
The individual that is, uh, in the seat currently, Mr. Carter, uh, will not be damaged by postponement. He remains in that seat, uh, for the next ninety days at least, or until a successor is appointed. So, that, and he's also served as the chairman of that particular board. Uh, he will continue to serve as that, as the chairman. He will continue to sit in that, on that board, so there's no damage whatsoever. He can continue to operate his business on the board as usual.
Thank you, Mr. Latier.
Yes, sir. Seeing no one else on the board for discussion, then I'm gonna call for the vote. Vote to postpone. Okay, that's a three-three tie, so nothing takes place on it, right? Okay? There are no items under consent agenda for introductions?
Madam Clerk, the motion to postpone failed. What is the procedural, the proper next step?
You guys can offer a motion to appoint, and if that fails or passes, um, if you guys want to go that route.
I didn't hear you.
That motion to postpone failed, so currently, no action has been taken.
No action, and I need the record to show one out of the chamber, okay? On the vote, three noes, uh, three yays, three noes, and one out of the chamber. Okay, there, anything else, Councilman Nixon?
What? I, I believe we have to take action on this matter, Mr. Chairman, and so the, the, if a member were inclined to o- offer a motion to confirm the appointment, we could then have a vote on that, and if it fails, that will be the outcome.
Mr. Chair? One is this, uh, if no action has to be taken at this particular time, because if we call for a vote, it's going to fail, then we will be liable to go to a court of law. And I don't think that we ought to jeopardize the city at this point in time. I think that we should just leave it like this, because my vote is not going to change.
Mine either, okay.
I, I, I hate to belabor the point, but I, don't we have an obligation to take some action on this today?
No, sir.
I, I'm asking the clerk, Pastor Green.
She doesn't know.
Are we forced to take action?
No.
Because.
Well, if, if, if the city attorney advises that we can take no action and the consequences that no action is taken on the, on the item, then we're done with this argument. Is that right, Mr. Latier?
I don't think any damage will be done if no action is taken, because everything remains the same.
Do they have to be voted as a slate?
Nobody's damaged whatsoever.
Do they have to be voted as a slate?
No.
Because he's there either way. Why are we not voting on, on, at least on the other?
I'm sorry, you had, I didn't hear you, Councilwoman.
She's wanting to know why we didn't vote on the sergeant.
The question was, if we don't have to vote on these as a slate, and the one is already serving until something else happens, we're just leaving that position unfilled by, for someone that there's no question about and was duly elected by her peers?
If you choose to vote on the other individual, you can, if you want to.
I can't hear. I'm sorry, I can't hear the city attorney.
You can vote, you can vote on the other individual if you like. That's up to you. Because normally, normally y'all separate the individuals anyway, and you have separate votes, so if y'all wanna do that, that's fine.
That's just my curiosity. Thank you, attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's hear it.
I move for the confirmation of Sergeant Shannon Hicks.
Second.
Motion and a second on Sergeant Hicks.
So, so what we did just now, I'm just making sure. I thought it was just, I thought it was, we did it both from together, so.
We, we moved, we moved to postpone. That motion failed. Uh, and so, at present, no action has been taken on either of these appointments. Uh, I have made the motion that we confirm Sergeant Hicks. Uh, Councilwoman Fuller has seconded that motion, uh, and that motion is on the floor for discussion or a vote.
Any other questions?
I'd rather just, I'd.
I'm sorry.
I'd rather just wait to next, uh, until Mr. Butcher's back in the, in the, in, in the chamber, and then we just go ahead and move on, so we won't have ourselves into something that we really shouldn't be into.
I'll offer substitute, well, substitute motion to nothing. I don't even know. But I'll just say, my asking wasn't in order to push the agenda to do that. I was just asking if we could do that. I didn't.
Yes.
It was just a neutral curiosity.
Yes, I can, if you want to. Y'all done it before, y'all done it before. Y'all separated the individuals before and voted separately. We did that two weeks ago. Y'all did it two weeks ago.
Well, I, 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 I'll just offer the further comment that I, I've heard no concern at all about Sergeant Hicks. No one has expressed any opposition to Sergeant Hicks, and so I don't know why we would not confirm her today, particularly if we had an obligation. No one has expressed any opposition to Sergeant Hicks, and so I don't know why we would not confirm her today, particularly if we had an obligation under state law to do so.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
At this particular time, we had a motion to postpone, that motion failed. During that particular motion, Sergeant Hicks was connected to the other. So we can't just arbitrarily just say, well, now we just want to vote for her.
And as I understood, Councilwoman Fuller, it was curiosity, is what she was asking, it wasn't necessarily a motion.
It was neutral curiosity.
I have made a motion.
And also.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Nixon.
I have made a motion, Councilwoman Fuller has seconded it, if, if she wants to withdraw her second, then there won't be a vote. But if the second stands, then I would like us to have a vote following discussion on Sergeant Hicks.
Okay, we'll clear that up now, do you want to withdraw your second?
If it will simmer everything back down, I'll withdraw my second.
Then my motion fails for lack of a second, once Councilman Butcher hears the second my motion to confirm Sergeant Hicks concerning whom there has been no objection privately or publicly. Hearing none, my motion fails for lack of a second, and we fail to take action of any kind on these nominations.
Okay. Now, let's, there are no items, any other, no other items under consent agenda for introduction or consent. Madam Clerk, will you please proceed with the regular agenda of legislation?
Resolution eighty-seven authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Shreveport, Louisiana and C. Edward Concepts LLC to provide curbside recycling within the limits of Shreveport, and there is one amendment. Amendment one in the original proposed exhibit A to resolution number eighty-seven of twenty-twenty-one at a new subsection E to section six performance assurance, and this amendment adds a clause to the contract requiring a performance bond be provided by the contractor.
I move for adoption of the amendment and request discussion.
Second.
We're gonna hear the discussion first.
Discussion? Motion and a second, and now ask for discussion.
Yes.
Councilman?
Mayor.
I didn't see a name on that.
Out in the spare, I don't know who that is. That you, Councilman Green?
Yeah, I just pushed, yes.
Okay, Councilman Green, you, you, you up for discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll be voting for this resolution, but I'll be voting against the amendment. In the city of Shreveport at this particular time, there are no other contracts that requires a security, nothing other than this particular one, I'll be voting against the amendment. We have a clause in the contract that if she does not perform all of her duties, we have the opportunity, we have the right to withdraw it. Mr. Latier, with your permission, I'd like for Mr. Attorney Latier to speak to that as to what covers us in this contract, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Well, with regard to the contract with C. Edward Concepts, as with any other contract with the city of Shreveport, there are, there are several reasons for termination, but the most important reason is the fact that if the city is not satisfied with her performance or their company's performance, it can terminate the contract at will at any time. And so I think that gives the city as much protection as it needs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Councilman Nixon?
Mr. Chairman, if adopted, this amendment would add the requirement of corporate surety bond to this recycling contract in the amount of the contract. Surety bonds of this nature are common in agreements of this nature. I have partially over the past two weeks reviewed numerous recycling contracts between third parties and municipalities around the country that have requirements exactly like this. I have expressed my concern about the possibility of the city entering a ten million dollar contract with a contractor who has no experience, no equipment, and no employees. I won't belabor that, but I will say that if we are going to enter a contract with the proposed contractor in this legislation, requiring a corporate surety bond is, is a, a basic and unobjectionable way to protect the interests of the citizens we represent. And so, for those reasons, I urge my colleagues, regardless of whether or not you intend to vote for the recycling contract, to vote in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just state for the record, this is not a ten million dollar contract, and I'll repeat it again, this is not a ten million dollar contract. I'll refer back to the city attorney, would you put on the record what amount that we are facing in this particular contract? Because misinformation has been put out about this, and I don't think that it's right that we would just, just state misinformation, that's wrong. So would you give the amount of money that we're talking about?
We're talking about one point nine million dollars per year. And obviously, if she fulfills the, the five-year term, potential term of the contract, that would amount to ten million dollars approximately. However, again, if the city of Shreveport is not satisfied with her performance, let's say after six months, it would only be on the hook to pay her for that amount for six months. If the city was satisfied with her performance for a whole year, then they'd be on the hook for one point nine million dollars. But the city is not on the hook for ten million dollars. It's really just on the hook based upon her performance every month, and she has to have specifics that she has to provide to the city with regard to what her requirements are and how she's completed those requirements. And again, if the city is not satisfied with her performance, they can terminate her contract at any time without cause, and that's it. At any time, one month, two months, three months, it would be over.
All right, is any further discussion? Let's call, let's, let's call for the vote on the, I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't see you.
Have you spoken with Ms. Edwards in reference to the surety bond?
Councilman Taylor, I appreciate that question. When Ms. Edwards' contract was first placed before the council, I offered to meet properly with her, and she ultimately declined that invitation, so I've not had the opportunity to speak with her about this recycling agreement. Regardless of whether or not the contractor is agreeable to a corporate surety bond, in my view, it's necessary to protect the public. And so that's why I've suggested that we add it to the contract.
You don't think we have those protections if we can still terminate this contract at will?
It is entirely possible that the contractor could breach this agreement in a way that was not immediately apparent to the city officials responsible for monitoring the contract's performance. And if that were to happen, the city might well pay substantial sums of money before it realized that a deficiency had occurred, and without a corporate surety bond, we would have no ready means of recovering that loss. And so that is the particular reason I think a corporate surety bond would be appropriate in this circumstance.
But it is my understanding on this contract that Ms., that this company is not receiving any upfront money. They would have to bill for those services that they would have, that would be, that would be monitored by those individuals of whom Ms. Edwards would have to report her invoices to. Thereby, if the services aren't rendered, then she would not get paid, correct?
Well, unfortunately, sometimes city officials, as, as busy as they are, sometimes do not timely discharge their obligations to monitor contractors, that has happened on many occasions over the past three years during my time on the council. And so, for that reason, even though the contract is terminable on thirty days notice, as Mr. Latier has indicated, I believe a corporate surety bond would be an appropriate protection for the city.
Do we have this for a number of contracts already at the city?
If we don't, if, if, if the city does not utilize corporate surety bonds in third-party contracts, that is a mistake that should be rectified prospectively.
Do we have surety bonds on our contract?
I'll just say, I can't say if any are currently active, but normally, right now, the, the, the bonds are, are aimed, as I'm looking at the purchasing regulation, at construction of public work projects that are over a certain amount. So, I hadn't located anything for RFPs that require a bond or a performance bond at this time for our purchasing regulations, so.
Is Mr. Wheeler here? Is Leon here? Mr. Wheeler here.
He was, but I think he went back upstairs.
Oh, okay.
Is Ms. Edwards here?
Ms. Edwards is, in the back.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I call for a vote. I call for the vote.
Call for the vote on the amendment. Right? Call for the vote on the amendment. Okay. Four yes and three no, so the amendment passes. Now, do I have a motion on the ordinance eighty-seven?
Mr. Chair? I know I was voting against the amendment, I don't know if I hit the green button or not, it's, how was my vote?
It's four three.
No.
You okay? Okay. All right, now, but let's, any discussion on the eighty-seven? Call for the vote then. Somebody say it, son?
Who was the motion and second?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
The motion and the second.
Motion and a second on the, 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 the motion by Councilman Green and a second by Vice Chair, okay? All right?
On?
On the amendment, oh, and you're on eighty-seven, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, can you give, Mr. Chairman, can you give my staff just one moment?
Well, sure.
There might be something that's impermissible about this amendment.
Okay, sure, we'd be glad to, thank you, no problem.
While the administration has that discussion, I'll just note that Google advises me that the installation of the passenger boarding bridge contract at the airport in the spring of this year required a corporate surety bond. So the suggestion that the city does not utilize corporate surety bonds is mistaken.
Okay. That's cleared up. I was thinking on the road projects, you know.
Sure, we use bonds on those all the time, that's how we make sure people do what they're supposed to do.
Right, if they go under.
That's right. That's how we protect the public, Mr. Chairman.
If we'd have a surety bond on that road up in District A.
That's right, we could have.
The company went under.
Collected on the bond, yeah. I, I will also note, just for the record, that this amendment has been on the agenda for two weeks.
Right.
If there was something wrong with it legally, which I am confident there is not, that should have been raised long before this meeting.
Sammy here with any more jokes? I've got his greatest hits recorded in my Facebook, I can just start.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
My understanding that the RFP did not require a surety bond, nor is it required pursuant to purchasing, so I don't think the amendment is appropriate.
I, I just, I'm gonna make this comment, again, for everybody that's now in the room, this amendment has been on the agenda for two weeks. And the time for the council, or a member of the council, to be told that it is not legally permissible is not during this meeting. If the RFP didn't require a corporate surety bond, it should have. And if the council requires a corporate surety bond over the objection of a minority of the council, which is what we've just done, that can be addressed after this meeting. But the council, in my view, appropriately and prudently, has amended this agreement to require a contractor with, again, and I, I understand this upsets some people to hear, but no experience, no equipment, and no employees to provide a bond to secure its performance. That is entirely appropriate and a matter of basic responsibility for the governing body of the city. Unless a, a member of the council who is in the prevailing, on the prevailing side of the vote, wants to move for reconsideration, then we've addressed this matter, and we should move on with a vote to consider the adoption of resolution eighty-seven.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Since we always follow legal, if our legal attorney say to us that it was not in the RFP, mistakes happen or whatever, then I think that we should follow our legal attorney, that's what he said. We voted because we didn't have what just been brought to us at that particular time. We were only voting on what we were voting on at that time, but when, my understanding is, when you know better, you do better.
I call for vote on the eighty-seven. Anybody ready? Okay, it's four yeses and three noes. It passes.
As amended, though.
As amended.
Okay. Resolution ninety-three suspending the effects of certain provisions of chapter sixty-six relative to the city's health benefits plan, and the administration has requested that this be withdrawn.
Do you need a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion and second by the chair. Any discussion? Let's, let's vote. Which, who we at?
In ninety-three.
Ninety-three, withdrawing ninety-three.
Okay, that passes. Six, yays and one no.
Resolution one oh, resolution one oh six authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Shreveport Bosor Convention and Jurors Bureau.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes seven zero.
Resolution one oh seven authorizing the acceptance of funds from the Shreveport Bosor Sports Commission.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes.
Resolution one oh eight authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all proposals received for the airport concessions program proposal, RFP number twenty-one dash eight.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second, any discussion? Let's vote. One oh eight passes.
Resolution one oh nine authorizing the mayor to, to execute a pipeline right-of-way and easement agreement for the construction of an oil and gas pipeline with Haynesville Gathering LP, an affiliate of Atheon Energy LLC.
Where is this again? Mr. Mayor, where is this located?
What is this?
The one oh nine?
The one oh nine.
Yeah.
What's the address on it?
That's okay.
Are you asking the location of the pipeline?
Yes.
It's down at the sludge farm, the sewer treatment facility, south of the city out in Parrish.
Hart's Island Road.
South of the port.
Hart's Island Road.
Yeah, way out by the port.
Way out.
Some movements, Chair.
Second.
Second. By Councilman Bowman.
Second.
By Councilman Bowman.
Let's vote. And that passes six yeas and one nay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to go back at some point, but when we get, I guess we can finish the resolution, but back on the confirmations to make sure we finished out what we're supposed to.
We'll finish up here and then we'll go back there, okay?
Resolution one eleven, a resolution for the certification and compliance with the state of Louisiana off-system bridge replacement program.
Some movements, Chair.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes seven zero.
Resolution one twelve, to dedicate the four hundred block of Herndon Street in honor of Dr. Leonard Roan Senior for his commitment and contributions to the Stoner Hill community and the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Councilwoman, motion?
Second.
And second by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes. Madam Clerk, proceed with the introduction of resolutions.
Resolution one thirteen, a resolution in support of the city of Shreveport's Guaranteed Income Program, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding. Resolution one fourteen, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all bids received for Wallace Interceptor at Bogie Bayou, SDO two IFB bid twenty-one dash zero three three. Resolution one fifteen, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with JP Morgan Chase Bank NA for the financing of vehicles and equipment. Resolution one sixteen, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the management agreement between the city of Shreveport and Metro Management Associates, Inc. Resolution one seventeen, authorizing the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association.
Can the motion be introduced? Some move.
I'm sorry, and there's also, I'm sorry, that's, I have an ordinance to add.
Now, Councilman Bowman, is this the time that you'd like to go back to on the exact appointments?
Yes, if the.
Ah, second for introduction. Okay.
On the, on the appointments, if we had three, three, and I want to make sure to state them right, so it was three, four, three against, if we had, if that was the vote, three, three, then that means the postponement itself failed.
Correct.
Okay, so we still have that, it's just hanging and lingering out there, so we still need to do some kind of action on it.
Action per.
Regardless, that's what we've done in the past, and that's just what we need to do today, that's to be right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say I agree with Councilman Bowman's recitation of the applicable procedural rule. We have to take action on those confirmations. The action may be postponed, and we have several members in the chamber, let's have a vote. If, and if the place of the council says we postpone, that's fine, but we can't do nothing with an agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to offer a motion to reconsider those appointments.
Okay.
The motion to postpone.
I can't hear.
The motion to postpone.
I second.
I'm missing, I'm missing things. We're reconsidering what now?
What?
We're reconsidering the reconsideration that those appointments that we're going to, that we voted on, that it failed, so therefore we got to take some action on it as to whether or not we're going to postpone it or not postpone.
Postpone or table, which one is it?
Postpone.
Postpone, motion to postpone.
But we got to get a motion to reconsider those items at this particular time.
Well, the motion, well, I don't, I'm sorry, whatever the clerk and the city attorney say, I.
You, you can have a motion to reconsider the motion to postpone.
Because, Councilman Bowman is the author of this, so.
Motion to postpone.
Yeah.
So, so let me, let me get this while I was out of the room. So, just where I can understand what's going on here, since I was out of the room, y'all tried to do a motion to postpone, but it tied three, three, correct?
Right.
So no action was taken on this.
Right.
So now we're trying to rectify that issue by postponing it or tableing it.
Right, because it was just the postponement that failed, not the, not the appointment, the postponement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is why we have to do something.
We're just going to reconsider, and then we'll go back through the motion of postpone.
Okay, motion to reconsider.
Has it been seconded?
Yeah. Motion to reconsider.
Who was the second?
Councilwoman Taylor, second.
Okay, that, yes, six, nay, one, so that's.
For reconsideration. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to postpone those two items.
And I second.
Yes.
Motion to postpone. Okay, that's five yes and two nos. Now, that motion postponed is approved. Thank you, Councilman Bowman, for bringing that. All right, now, Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the introduction of ordinances?
Ordinance one twenty-seven, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana twenty-two one general fund budget, approving the funds authorized therein. Ordinance one twenty-eight, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana twenty-two one capital projects fund budget. Ordinance one twenty-nine, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana twenty-two one general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana twenty-two one general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-one, amending the twenty-two one general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-two, amending the twenty-two one general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-three, amending the twenty-two one general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-four, amending the twenty-two one capital projects fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-five, to amend ordinance number seventy-four, twenty-two one, which revised chapter seventy-eight, article four, street sidewalks and other public places, construction, excavations. Ordinance one thirty-six, to amend, to add a new section ninety dash one twenty-eight to chapter ninety, article four, division two of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to drag racing and racing. Ordinance one thirty-seven, to amend various articles and sections in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code. Ordinance one thirty-eight, to amend the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code relative to fees for the waiver of landscape requirements. Ordinance one thirty-nine, zoning case number twenty-one dash seventy-five dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning a property located on the west side of Beverly Place, approximately ninety feet north of Broadmoor Boulevard, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R two, multiple-family residential district to C two corridor commercial district. And ordinance one forty, to amend section sixty-two dash ninety-one of the Code of Ordinances relative to the Department of Public Assembly and Recreation Fee Schedule.
Is there a motion to introduce these?
Some movements, Chair.
Okay. Second. Okay. We don't have to vote on those, do we? Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance one thirteen, amending the twenty-two one Riverfront Development Special Revenue Funds Budget.
Some movements, Chair.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? Let's vote. Final passage.
Your Honor, we're waiting on your vote.
And that passes seven. Yes.
Ordinance one eighteen, to amend chapters two, twenty-five, thirty-four, thirty-eight point five, seventy-eight, and ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances by abolishing, abolishing the Comprehensive Environmental Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes.
Ordinance one nineteen, amending the twenty-two one budget for the general fund, and there is one amendment, and amendment one, it changes the amount on other charges from three hundred and fifty to three thirty-five, and adds an increase to materials and supplies by fifteen thousand, and this will be used for bulletproof vests by, for property standards inspectors.
Some move on amendment, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Let's vote. On the amendment, and amendment passes, now.
Some move on the ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
What does it mean?
Okay, let's vote. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes.
Ordinance one twenty, amending the twenty-two one general fund budget.
Some movement, Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes.
Ordinance one twenty-one, declaring the city's interest in certain vacant land a surplus and our attention to transfer certain vacant land acquired by the Shreveport Public Assembly and Recreation to Shreveport Common Inc. for economic and land development purposes, and this needs to be postponed for publishing requirements.
Okay, Councilwoman Fuller is the author of that, right?
Some moves on the postponement.
Second by Green.
Second by Green. And let's vote. It's to postpone? Okay. And that passes seven zero.
Ordinance one twenty-two, declaring the city's interest in certain vacant land a surplus and our attention to transfer certain vacant land acquired by the Shreveport Public Assembly and Recreation to Shreveport Common Inc., and this also needs to be postponed for publishing.
Move to postpone and a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Fuller.
Made the motion, and then second by the vice chair.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes. Postpone.
Ordinance one twenty-three, declaring the city's interest in certain vacant land a surplus and our attention to transfer certain vacant land to the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, and this also needs to be postponed for publishing requirements.
Motion to postpone.
Okay.
Second.
Councilman Nicholson on the second, okay. All right, any discussion? Then let's vote. And that's adopted seven. Postponement passes.
Ordinance one twenty-four, zoning case number twenty-one dash seventy-six dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning a property located in the southwest corner of Mylum Street and Arkansas Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, from C one neighborhood commercial district to C three general commercial district. Councilman Bowman.
He asked to postpone, please.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. And that passes.
Zoning case number twenty-one dash one hundred dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning a property located on the southeast corner of Pirmont Road and Willard Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, from R one seven, single-family residential district to C one neighborhood commercial district.
Move to postpone.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Then let's vote. Passes. Postponement.
Postponed by Fuller, second by Nicholson. I mean, vice versa, I'm sorry, vice versa.
Ordinance one twenty-six, zoning case number twenty-one dash one zero three dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning a property located on the north side of West Seventieth Street, approximately one hundred and seventy-nine feet east of Sun Tan Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, from C two corridor commercial district to C three general commercial district.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes. Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of.
Councilman Bowman, I'm sorry.
I just want to, and I know I'm going back again, but I'm trying to be correct on, on, on stuff, if, and I'm going back on the contract for the.
Recycle.
Recycle. If it, and I'm direct the question, if you can help me with it, if this was something that wasn't in the contract, and then this is adding a cost to it, so we're voting on something that she didn't already sign to, that's what I'm looking at, that's, that's why I'm going on that, I missed out on, on the second part, but we're not, so help me on, just help me on the amendment, that's what I'm saying.
She has not signed any contract, the contract hasn't been executed yet, can't be executed without.
Well, I mean, her agreement, not, not signed, her agreement.
Well, the, the city and the contractor don't have an agreement right now, and they can't have an agreement until the council approves the contract. You know, when all this started, the discussion we, I thought we had, was that we would go back to the drawing board with the RFP process and try again, and I would be perfectly satisfied with that outcome. I just think, and thankfully, at least as of right now, four members of the council agreed with my position, that it would be incredibly irresponsible to approve this contract without requiring a surety bond. That's why I offered the amendment, I put it on the agenda for last meeting, two weeks ago, so it was no secret to anybody in the room, and my opinion, perspective, and request are that we let stand what we've done with the amendment today, rather than undo it, and I'm sure that the city attorney can sort that out or attempt to do so with the contractor prospectively, and if he can't, then we can discuss it in two weeks, but I'm, I'm not interested if the inquiry is, is directed to my opinion in undoing anything we've done on that amendment. Thank you.
I would just ask the administration going forward, that if we require this on these contracts, that it should be required on all contracts of this particular amount moving forward. It should not just be pick and choose and.
Yeah, and honestly, Councilwoman, I think that's the concern of the administration, is that it wasn't, it wasn't solicited for all bids. Everybody bid without having.
Right.
The injunction of the performance bond, so.
Yeah, it needs to be.
That's our concern.
If it, if it has to be a part of the RFP process, then it needs to be included in the RFP process, so each person knowing that they, when they submit a request for proposal, that this is what you have to have. So I think that needs to be lined out and clear, so all parties that apply for anything, any services with the city of Shreveport will know that.
And, Mr. Attorney, so, and your take on that was, well, I'm just making sure I'm clear on, on all this, because I, I had some moving parts at that time, so I'm just making sure I'm on the same page.
It's my understanding that a surety bond has not been required on most of these types of contracts, and it's also my understanding that a surety bond was not part of the RFP process.
Councilman Green.
Mr. Chair, this question would be to the administration, the folk, that, I, I can't remember the name of the company at this time, that handles our insurance for our employees. Whenever their contract is up, would we also look at having this type of bond for them, because all the money that they've basically, we've been ripped off with them, we cannot recover it, and I think that, that do our due diligence, that should also be noted, that at this particular time, that, and not only should they have a security bond, but it should be something in their contract, that if we in fact ask them to come to the meeting, the city council meeting, and they refuse, that it ought to be something in there, that their contract would be null and void as well, since we are the governing body. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's nothing to be removed from the table. We have one alcohol beverage appeal to consider today, is that still standing, Ms. Fuller?
Chairman, I'd like to postpone it again, but I'd like to invite my colleagues that they'd like to work with me on whatever amendments need to be made, that we can sponsor that, we need to try to work on that soon.
Do we need a motion to postpone?
Yeah.
Okay, motion, and do we have a second? Okay, Councilman Nicholson, second. And any discussion? Let's pass. Okay, that motion to postpone has been approved. Okay, and ABO appeal, we got that already, and we have two MPC appeal to consider today.
The first one is MPC case number twenty-one dash one oh one dash C, special use permit and site plan for Belter Enterprise Construction and Remodeling LLC at twenty-nine zero one Mylum Street.
Postpone. Motion to postpone?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, that's been approved, postponed.
The second one is MPC case number twenty-one dash one one eight dash C, a special use permit and site plan for scene two LLC sixteen oh eight North Market Street.
I have a motion to uphold MPC's ruling.
Second.
It is second?
Motion by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilwoman Fuller.
Okay, it is.
Mr. Chair, just in the proper way to vote is to vote?
Yes.
Vote yes.
So yes, or uphold?
Vote yes, or uphold? Okay.
I just want to say one thing, when Ms. Phillips, was it?
Mm-hmm.
Strong talk.
Right.
So strong, and when she gave the address of the place, and I pulled it up, and I think that Nicholson and I both pulled it up at the same time on Google Maps, and for all the discussion about how it's not that close to any residential, I feel like there's residential close enough to actually be considered, and it just kind of makes me think about yet again how often we don't consider certain areas outside of our general sphere, of geographical sphere, we just think of it as throwaway neighborhood, and it's not.
Look, and I'll, I'll just add, that, you know, everybody has certain issues that they care about, and the proliferation of liquor stores in socio-economically disadvantaged neighborhoods is mine. One of mine. This site is three tenths of a mile from Villanorte Apartments.
Correct.
Okay, three tenths of a mile. I'm not voting to approve any liquor store three tenths of a mile from Villanorte Apartments, if I wouldn't vote to put it three tenths of a mile from South Highlands, or Broadmoor, or Southern Trace, or El Agro Estates, it's just the same, and the, and, and another point I want to make is the suggestion that because the city council has done this wrong for many, many years, we should continue to do it wrong, is a fallacy. The fact that our predecessors have approved liquor stores in the manner that they have, in a manner that has disadvantaged some of the people who have historically struggled the most in our community, is no reason to continue making the same mistake.
But I wasn't, I don't know that was completely.
Don't they have a right?
Well, Councilwoman.
But I just, I'm, I'm done now.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Fuller, let me, I will add this part, Ms. Phillips spoke along with other neighbors at the MPC meeting. Ms. Phillips and the neighbors attended the neighborhood participation meeting, as what we approved and ask when there's any new development, rezoning, or whatever coming into a community that they take part in. So they take part in the process, and then we look in turn and somewhat criticize them for taking part of the process, or even for the councilperson that's representing them, telling them what it is that we're not supposed to do, as their vested interest there. My constituents are intelligent enough, as so well stated, to make their own informed decisions. I hear and represent their interest, and when you say that community is not there, it tells me that you're not a part of this community. Not only do you have Villanorte there, Councilman Nicholson, you have one, two, three, four, five subsequent multifamily complexes right behind there. If you go across the street, then you have Grimley Drive Apartments, you have Highland Park, you have Cherokee Park, all within this vicinity. Just because you can't see it from the road doesn't mean that it isn't there. There are a number of individuals who walk across the street all the time, crossing North Market, going to McDonald's, going to Wendy's, going to all of these places that are surrounded, not to mention that we have Cherokee Park Elementary School and J.S. Clark on the fourth end. So when you say that it's not community there, it is community, otherwise they wouldn't have shown up at the neighborhood participation meeting.
I concur, so when we say that we don't, that these, that there's not these communities, and Cherokee Park is single-family residential homeowners.
Right.
So when we say that, that's, that's like the first step, that's like the, like the first domino disenfranchisement of a community, when you just act like they're not there because they're not in your general scope.
Right.
They're not, they're not where you frequent on a day-to-day basis.
Correct.
And I can't, I can't unsee that, because how far, like if you, if you're in your car and you drive from, from sixteen oh eight North Market to Dr. Gail's house in Cherokee Park, how far is that? Five minutes?
Less than five.
Less than five minutes. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say to Councilman Nicholson, man, I'd like to say thank you, and I applaud you. This is my third trip on the council. We've never had a person that was like you, that would help our neighborhoods, and I don't mean no, going by saying it that way, but we have never had a person on this council who's been consistent about this for our neighborhoods. There have never been a person on here like you, and I just want to say openly, thank you, because there have been other folk who say, well, it's business and whatever, but I appreciate how you have been consistent in doing this, and I just, I just wanted to say it openly so that people will know.
Thank you, Bill.
And I, I just want to say thank you.
You looking at me to agree with you?
No.
Oh, okay.
What else, then?
That's it.
Vote to postpone?
I agree with you.
No. No. Uphold the MPC.
Yeah, okay. That vote's already been, all right, are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
We hadn't voted.
Oh, I thought we had, okay, and that's a.
So it's a yes. Vote to uphold, right?
Please vote. And that passes, to uphold, seven zero. Okay, we have no property standards appeal today, are there any appeals for Madam Clerk?
There are no other appeals.
Okay, are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Is there a clerk's report?
I have none.
Okay, Mayor Perkins, do you have an additional communications?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Does any council member have additional communications?
I'd like for Patrick Furlong to give us an update on the road repair, so he can just call me on that.
Patrick Furlong. Okay, then there's nothing else, that's, council is adjourned.